Good evening, West Orange. This is Joe Fagan, Public Information Officer for the Township of West Orange. Welcome to the Township Council meeting for April 18, 2023. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Council President Tammy Williams.
Good evening, West Orange, and welcome to our 10th Town Council meeting. Madam Clerk.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's office on November 23, 2022, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 1, 2022. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman Geber Michael?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Sparpa?
Present.
Council President Williams?
Present.
Mayor McCartney.
Thank you. And we would like to start this evening's conference agenda with accolades, proclamations, and salutations for those of you who are doing a phenomenal job in West Orange. So with that, I turn it over to Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. So, this evening, we are here to celebrate our West Orange High School hockey team. And I understand when the council did approve funding to support the hockey team, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't remember how many years ago it was.
Ten.
Ten years. Thank you, board member.
Former board.
So strong. And many of the first players are here today. So we're thrilled to see you. So this is a commendation from my council colleagues. West Orange High School Hockey Team, under the watchful eye of Coach Eddie Scatiti and Coach Shane Diak, has continued to grow in numbers and skill each year. The team finished the season with 13 wins, the most since 2004. Probably before you. So 13 wins, eight losses, and one tie. The team's 7-3 record in the McMullen Division of the NJHHL has good enough for second place and the first round bye in the divisional tournament. West Orange rallied to defeat top seed at Scotch Plains, Vanwood High School 3-2, and a championship game on Wednesday, February 15, 2023, at Cody Arena. So I'm going to ask Coach Shane and Coach Eddie to come up. We're going to recognize your team, please. The mayor and town council are proud to recognize the West Orange High School 2022-2023 hockey team on their excellent sportsmanship and achievement in capturing the McMullen Cup Championship, and wishes them continued success in the future. So we're hoping you're not all seniors, and that we can see you again next season. So Coach Shane, if you want to read off their names, we can bring them up.
All right. Daniel Duran. Aton Natie. Jack Olson. Jackson Proxarnico. Andrew Raymond. Calvin Francottis. Remy Brollo. Caleb Gattens. Josh Lindo. Mason Rubenstein. Pete Stevens. Christian Anderson. Iron Flowers. Dominique Frappicio. Anthony Pandio. Paul Saunders. Reed Sager. Howard Druck. Mark Ray Chacon. Evan Kerr. And Andrew Riccando.
Very nice. Here, guys, some are freshmen and some are up in ball.
Thank you so very much. And again, congratulations on your success.
That's the other row three.
Yeah. Thank you. Great job. We appreciate you guys coming out. It's always a pleasure to combine community, our educational system, and our municipality. So we appreciate you and continued success for 2023-2024 season. You're welcome. You're welcome. And again, for those of you who may have been in the Zoom queue, or those of you all who were here this evening, please accept my personal apology for being late this evening. Traffic was very, very difficult to maneuver coming from Maristown. So I do apologize for my tardiness publicly. Moving right along, we'd like to swear in our West Orange Tax Assessor. So if I could ask Madam Mayor and Mr. Jacob Niemann to please come forward. And for those of you who may not know, Mr. Niemann has joined us from Ocean County. He has been a licensed tax assessor for several years, working in that capacity. It is a privilege and a pleasure to welcome him to West Orange.
Let me just say, right, so Jacob Niemann is new to West Orange, comes from Ocean County. All right, John, you're back in. But this is such an impressive resume that he has, and he is joined by our institutional knowledge already of Connie Moriello and Shane, that Shane is, that's already there. So we're pleased to welcome Mr. Niemann as our new tax assessor, replacing Kevin Dillon after so many years. But not only does he have an impressive professional resume, the bad school of community service projects that I know I will be reeling him in, to many of the commission staff support.
They can't do that.
Thank you. All right.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and obedience.
And that I will bear true faith and obedience.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of.
Under the authority of.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties of the Office of Tax Assessor.
All of the duties of the Office of Tax Assessor.
Thank you very much, and welcome to West Orange. We look forward to.
Jacob, Jacob, can, yeah, can you just leave those? I'll bring them up for signature tomorrow. All right.
And moving right along, we would now like to welcome the Whole Spectrum Autism Foundation. Yes, it is.
Autism. We have members of our West Orange Special Education Parent Advisory Group. And I don't see Pastor Adams, but Pastor Adams is the Chair of the Mayor's Program for Individuals with Disabilities. So this proclamation will serve purpose.
And would we like the members of the Special Education Parent Advisory Council to come forward as well? Yes, please do.
And Mr. Moore, we're going to ask that you come up as well as the Assistant Superintendent. Thank you, thank you. Principal Cataras, as well as our area director, also here, Coach Sakala, Athletic Director, I'm sorry.
Since the beginning of the month, thanks to Sherri and her daughter Jazz, we raised a flag for autism acceptance. We had a beautiful flag-raising ceremony, and I don't know to start the line, that while we were outside on the stairs of town hall.
This New Jersey Transit bus pulled up, and it just had the whole autism awareness on the side of the, on the side of the bus. So it just seemed like a sign for Autism Acceptance Month. So this proclamation is in recognition of April being dedicated to autism acceptance. The township is proud to commend Whole Spectrum Autism and our local organizations dedicated to promoting solutions across the spectrum and throughout the lifespan for the needs of individuals with autism and their families, and seek to work collaboratively with the local efforts of members of the Township's West Orange Special Education Parent Advisory Council and the Mayor's Program for Uniquely Gifted. Whereas, as more health professionals become proficient in diagnosing autism, more children are being diagnosed on the autism spectrum, resulting in higher rates such as 1 in 45 adults and 1 in 54 children nationally, according to 2023 data, and 1 in 32 children here in New Jersey. While there is no cure for autism, it is understood that if individuals with autism receive early treatment, they are likely to lead significantly improved lives. Those with autism often require a lifetime of specialized and community support to ensure their health and safety, as well as the support of their families, who must manage the psychological and financial burdens. Raising acceptance and educating others about the needs and challenges facing these, those with autism, is vital in reaching their potential. Those with physical or mental disabilities have often been precluded from fully participating in aspects of society. In arming the public with information, those with autism have a better chance to succeed in life. During Autism Acceptance Month, we recognize all those who serve as advocates to autism acceptance, such as Whole Spectrum Autism, the Mayor's Program for the Uniquely Gifted, and the Township's West Orange Special Education Parent Advisory Council. We urge, they remain on the forefront of acceptance, efforts to educate parents, professionals, and the public about autism and its effects. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, Susan McCartney, Mayor of the Township, do hereby proclaim April 2023 as National Autism Acceptance Month in the Township of West Orange, and urge all employees and residents to participate in National Autism Acceptance Month activities as well in the months to follow, to become better educated about autism and create a better community for individuals with autism. So we have the township.
I'd like to say thank you to Mayor President, and of course, everyone here in West Orange. This was our first time raising the flag here in West Orange, and we're very, very grateful and very proud that we were able to do that. It was definitely a privilege. So thank you very much. We hope that we can work together and collaborate with, you know, everyone on our team here. This is our team now as well. So we're looking forward to collaborating with everyone and everyone in the township as well, to raise acceptance and, you know, go forward and kind of just have everyone realize that we want to have acceptance, but also inclusivity for the folks with autism and who are on the autism spectrum. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for allowing us to be here today, and we look forward to collaborating.
Thank you. Ms. Velazquez.
Hi, my name is Gina Velazquez, and I live on Coral Circle. I am here tonight on behalf of WOCPAC, which is the West Orange Special Education Parents Advisory Committee, and a district-wide organization, and PAS, which is the parents advocating for special services in education. I have lived here in West Orange for 24 years and have been a part of WOCPAC and PAS for the, for the last 15-plus years. I have a 21-year-old Nicholas, who's over there, with autism, which is why I am so passionate and involved in the West Orange Special Needs Community. I came here tonight to address the issue of our special needs community being ignored. I understand that Mayor McCartney has welcomed and said to be working with the whole autism organization out of Jersey City for the autism flag-raising, and now honoring them the opportunity to present the proclamation for Able to Be Autism Awareness Month. My frustration is, why did you choose to partner with this organization out of Jersey City, who, to my knowledge, nobody that I know of has heard of? But here you have three local groups, being WOCPAC, PAS, and the Mayor's Uniquely Gifted, which are all established organizations with 20 years plus who have been ignored. I don't understand why the disrespect to those of us who are right here in West Orange. Wait, hold on. My note. I don't understand why the disrespect to those of us who are right here in West Orange, providing resources, events, activities, scholarships, and more, and remain, but remain invisible to you all. I am hoping that we can get the same support going forward and have hopes that the whole autism organization will reach out to us so that we can work together for a stronger and more inclusive special needs community here in West Orange. I want to let you all know of an upcoming Paint and Sit Scholarship fundraiser we are having. Oh, my goodness, sorry. One second. I'm still within my 30 minutes. That we are having, a fundraiser we are having on April 30 in recognition for Autism Awareness Month. It will be held at the West Orange Elks Lodge from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., and tickets are $55. This will be our eighth annual Paint and Sit, where all proceeds go to qualified seniors with an IEP or 504 graduating from West Orange High School. We welcome all contributions with a check or Venmo. Thank you for giving me the honor opportunity on behalf of the special needs community in West Orange.
Thank you.
So I didn't expect that. I did apologize to the group. I don't know that many of you know that myself, Cynthia Hadley-Billy, and there's another woman, Angela Trampoda, that we were the founding members of class. So it was not too deliberate, which would start to ignore anyone. I worked collaboratively. I made the same family reached out to us to have this acceptance month, and I enthusiastically embraced it. I'm sorry if I didn't include any other groups. I am well aware of them. But it is a local group. It was the, the Whole Spectrum Autism that reached out to the mayor's office. Me, the township, did not sponsor that event. We welcome the organization to come in. So if I, there was no intent to slight anyone, we are in this together, which is the whole idea of acceptance. So the proclamation reads that we will work collaboratively, collaboratively, just as Jess said, now that they have lived in the town for 20 years. Our children were served out of district, and we wanted to work together. So I'm sorry if you feel that way. It was not, it was not intended.
Hi, my name is Sherri Singh. I'm a mother of a 37-year-old severe autistic adult son.
We don't discuss.
I reached out to the mayor, who's a resident of West Orange for the past 22 years. And for 22 years, living in West Orange. My kids were born in Jersey City, but we moved to West Orange 20 years ago. So this is our home. The foundation that I started eight years ago, I started it, yes, the main office right now is in Jersey City, because I have other businesses there. But as we are growing and we are spreading out to different counties and different towns, I reached out to this town because this is where my residence. It means a lot to me to raise that flag here and like the clatter, include everyone. So I apologize if anyone was offended. I would love for us to work together and move forward from here. Having a child with autism or anyone on the spectrum, it's not an easy ride. It's a ride that I wish on no one, because I ride every single day of my life, every minute. And the reason why I started the Whole Spectrum Autism, which is heard of worldwide, because I have people from Italy, England, New York, Connecticut, Florida, everywhere, reaching out to us. We have thousands and thousands of followers and people that reach out to me every day. So I just want to let everyone know we are willing to work together. I want this, you know, two organizations, three organizations, four, and many areas, if we all come together, we can get things done. We can get lost paths. We can get, you know, policy rerun. We are here all fighting for the rights of our loved ones, and I will not stop. The reason why I started this is because my own son was abused, and he lost his mind. I started it eight years ago because he was left off a bus from a different town coming home. He turned it off. So there is a reason why I started this. I started this because I wasn't accepted on a plane. I was kicked off a plane. I started this because I was kicked out of many restaurants, grocery stores, got into fights in public parks, because family members told me to put my son away. The public told me to put my son away. He's an animal. So that's why I started this. So yes, I know maybe some of you have not heard about the Whole Spectrum, but God as my witness today, you will, because this mother will kick every single door open, which is everyone's bed.
Thank you, Ms. Singh. Thank you. Thank you so very much. We appreciate all of you. Thank you. Hold on. Okay. I changed that. My job. And finally, we have a presentation on tick awareness. So I would love to welcome our Health Director, Michael Fonzino, as well as Leanne to the podium.
Serious.
Are you going to read her by?
My name is Michael Fonzino, Director of the West Orange Department of Health and Welfare. As part of our Mayor's Wellness Campaign, we're trying to raise immunity awareness about tick-borne illnesses. And in doing so, we've asked Ms. Leanne Gelber from the SX Regional Health Commission to give a short presentation on tick awareness. Council President, did you want to introduce us?
I will. Ms. Leanne? So Leanne grew up in Livingston, New Jersey, and currently works for the SX Regional Health Commission. She graduated with a Master's in Social Work from Fordham University and worked as a state of New Jersey COVID contact tracer for almost two years before becoming the Infectious Disease Prevention Generalist assigned to West Orange. Thank you and welcome.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Leanne, and I am the Infectious Disease Prevention Generalist. And today, we're going to be talking about tick-borne illnesses and diseases. So just a little background, tick-borne diseases can be passed to humans by the bite of infected ticks. Ticks can be infected with bacterias, viruses, or parasites. And in order to survive, ticks need to eat blood. This requires them to find a host, be it a human host or an animal. And in order to survive, ticks need to eat blood. This requires them to find a host, be it a human host or an animal. Uh, ticks find their hosts by waiting in well-used paths. And they are able to detect hosts through body odor, breath, and sensing body heat, moisture, and vibrations that we give off uh when they go on their journey to find a host. It's called questing. Um, tick exposure can occur year-round, but it's most prominent in the warmer months. So peak tick season is April through September. Uh, ticks live in grassy, brushy, or wooded areas, so you're most likely to encounter a tick while you're walking your dog, camping, gardening, or spending time outdoors. So why has there been an increase in ticks? Uh, two main contributors. First, climate change. So as we are living, or sorry, uh, as we have longer periods of warm weather, the environment becomes better suited for ticks. Um, we are also making more parts of the United States inhabitable to ticks because we're having uh such warm weather. And then there's also land development. So as we uh continue to develop land, build buildings, homes, we're uh running into animals and we are using the same areas that they are. So here are a few tick-borne illnesses that we have. First is alpha gout, which is also known as red meat allergy or an alerted reaction to dairy. And this can be potentially life-threatening. Some symptoms that you would want to look out for are hives or rash, nausea or vomiting, difficulty breathing, swelling of the lips, throat, and tongue, uh dizziness or faintness, and severe stomach pain. And this is caused by the lone star tick, which you can see on the right. Another disease uh illness that we have is babesiosis, which is caused by a parasite that infects the red blood cells. And this is caused by the black-legged tick, or also known as the deer tick, which is the most common tick that we have in our East region. Uh, symptoms include fever, chills, sweats, malaise, fatigue, myalgia, which is body aches, headache, uh, anorexia, and nausea, and dark urine. And then the most common uh ti- uh tick-borne disease that we have is Lyme disease. This is caused by the bacteria Borrelia burgdorferi and rarely by Borrelia monei. Uh, it is transmitted to humans through the bite of infected black-legged or deer ticks again. Uh, signs and symptoms occur three to thirty days after a tick. And you will know that you are beginning to have symptoms. Um, you will see a red annular bite, which kind of looks like a bull's eye that will continue to expand after being bit. Again, fever uh symptoms include fever, chills, blaze, fatigue, headache, body aches, and arthra- arthralagia. Uh, in twenty-twenty, there were two thousand five hundred sixty-six cases of Lyme disease in New Jersey. If you notice symptoms, it's important that you go see your medical provider because they can prescribe antibiotic treatment. There's also a resource that we linked at the end. It's called TickBot. So if you've been bit, you can go on to the CDC's website and you can just put in information and it'll prompt you. It'll ask when you were bit, where you were bit, the size of the tick, if you started to have symptoms, and it will then direct you accordingly. So some quick statistics, um, starting from seven uh July first, twenty-twenty-two to March twentieth of twenty-twenty-three, West Orange has had thirty-seven reported tick-borne cases. Um, and we've had two babesiosis, two alpha gout, and thirty-three Lyme disease. As you can see, uh, it's been steadily increasing over the past few years. Back in twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one, we didn't even have any alpha gout. And as you can see, Lyme disease has been the most prominent disease that we've had. So how can we protect ourselves? Before going outside, it's really important to be aware of your surroundings. So if you're going to be hiking or be in a wooded area, it's important that you take the proper precautions. So you're going to want to treat your clothing with the uh ingredients that have from repellents listed here. You're also going to want to make sure that you tuck your socks uh, sorry, your pants into your socks. After being outside, you're going to want to conduct a full body scan. You're going to want to check your clothing for ticks. If you're going hiking with a pet, you're going to want to check your pet as well. And then you're going to want to make sure that you take a shower. Um, studies have shown that if you shower within two hours of being outdoors, it can greatly reduce the risk of Lyme disease. How can we protect ourselves? If you do find a tick on yourself, you're going to want to make sure that you use clean, fine-tipped tweezers to grasp the tick. You're not going to want to twist or grab it. You're going to want to steadily pull it out. This is to prevent its head from coming off because then the head can bury inside of the skin. Um, if it does, if that does happen, it's okay. You're going to want to leave it alone and go see your doctor. Um, make sure that you never crush the tick after you've pulled it out with your fingers. You don't want to get the blood and the bacteria everywhere. So you can either put it in a baggie, you can wash it down the toilet. Um, you can put it between two pieces of tape, or you can put it in alcohol. Uh, and again, if you notice that you are developing any rash or fever within several weeks of removing the tick, go see your doctor. Things that you're going to want to document is tell the doctor about the recent tick bite. You can bring it with you if you've preserved it. Um, you want to tell them where the bite occurred and where you think you most likely acquired the tick. That this information is used by the CDC. Okay, how can we protect our pets? Um, they actually have created a Lyme disease vaccine for pets that can be given. They also create preventative sprays and serums that you can put on your pet. Uh, and you also want to scan your pet after being outdoors. And again, because ticks really like warm areas, they're going to hide behind the ears, the tail, between the toes, uh places that are hard to find and warm. Um, and then something else that you want to do is you want to make your yards less hospitable to ticks. So you're going to want to remove any leaf litter. Uh, sometimes dogs or children like to play in the leaves and that's where they can get them. You're going to want to clear all tall grass and mow your lawn as often as possible. You can place a three-foot-wide barrier of wood chips or gravel between uh the wood and your home. You can uh stack wood uh and any remove any old furniture or mattresses because you're going to want to discourage any rodents or other animals from trying to make a home there where they may have been bit by ticks or have them on them. Uh, keep playground equipment, desks, uh decks, patios away from the yard's edges and trees. And again, just try to discourage unwelcome animals in your yard. Again, more information can be found on these websites. So we have information on the West Orange website. We have it on N J D O H. And we've also linked uh CDC's tick bot. Make sure that you stay safe and enjoy the outdoors. And thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Leanne, for that helpful information. I think I want to go home and take a shower now. Um, wow, thank you so very much. Um, good information. We appreciate you.
And don't feed the deer.
Yeah, please, don't feed the deer. And we're going to ask that we defer our council liaison announcements to later in the evening.
Council President, one more. Uh, I know that you went a little bit over time from the conference agenda, but I would like to introduce Stephanie Santana. We're not prepared to swear Stephanie in, but this would be a new addition to our finance office. And again, another very impressive resume. Um, Stephanie was a municipal comptroller, counts and control director from the city of Jersey City. She started just yesterday, so I wanted to introduce her. And if you'd like to say hello, we're just welcome to West Orange. We welcome you.
To the microphone so the people on the Zoom audience can also hear you.
The John Rose and to the members. I look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
As many of you may know, uh, this is a vacancy that's been up for about six months. And uh, and while I think everyone in the organization is very anxious and happy to see this filled, no more than I have. But it's been a long wait, but I I know from all of my interactions with Stephanie that it's worth the wait.
And what's Stephanie's official title?
Sorry?
Her official title?
She is uh, she's number two in the in the finance offices and under me and then uh working with me, so.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section Five of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter Two Thirty-One, Public Law nineteen seventy-five. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December first, twenty-twenty-two. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman Gebre Michael?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Scarpa?
Present.
Council President Williams?
Present.
Mayor McCartney?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands. I am a native of individual liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in the public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we have public comment and just a few housekeeping rules. Um, we usually start this at seven o'clock. Um, and so I do apologize and thank you for your patience. During public comment, we ask that you please speak into the microphone. Um, before you begin, state your name and address for the record, and you will have five minutes to voice your concerns. We want to hear your public comments, but we also encourage our residents to communicate with us via email and or telephone. We um would love to have more interaction. Certainly, this forum is that opportunity. Um, but more direct com- contact is always appreciated, and then we can do more behind the scenes. So again, I thank you. And we begin this with uh our public information officer, Mr. Joe Fagan.
Oh, thank you, Council President. Uh, I have a few quick announcements to make this evening. Uh, I'd like to start off with a reminder, this is a slide that you had sent me, Council President, about free COVID nineteen vaccines. Now, it says, hey, orange there. But I confirmed with Council President that this is open to everyone. And it is this Friday, April twenty-first. Uh, I'm sorry, is it this Friday? It's April twenty-first. And it's one P M. to six P M. at Saint Matthew A M E Church, Oakwood Avenue in Orange, New Jersey. Um, also, we have a traffic safety class coming up this Saturday uh at Washington Elementary School. Um, advanced registration is required. And you can email L Lee at easyride.org uh or call the phone number seen here. And this information is available on westorange.org. Uh, we also have, you know, how many of West Orange residents have lived in West Orange, uh, live in West Orange and never had the opportunity to visit the Thomas Edison National Historical Park? There is no better opportunity than April twenty-second uh when it is free entrance day. And I believe this includes Glenmont, uh, which in itself is worth worth the effort to visit. Now, uh, the Thomas Edison National Historical Park has been a great partner for West Orange. And the mayor asked that I display this. They are hiring. Uh, you can go on the website here or contact Karen Slot Olsen uh at uh, she works at both uh West Orange and Marsh Town. Her number is up there. And if anybody has uh any questions, you can certainly contact me. We also have shredding day coming up Sunday, April twenty-third. This is important because the next scheduled date is ten fifteen. So gather those documents. You can check on the website as to what's expect, uh, what's accepted and what's not accepted. It's also, I'm pleased to announce that the West Orange Police Department has seven new recruits entering the Passaic County Police Academy on April twenty-seventh. And personal point of uh being a proud father, my son is going to be one of those recruits entering the Passaic County Police Academy, not for West Orange Police Department, but for another uh, another police department. Uh, so he was a former Chattanooga police officer. Uh, moved back to New Jersey and is getting back into law enforcement. Um, also, West Orange Fire Department has six new recruits entering the Newark Fire Academy on May first. Um, so we are um going to have new firemen and new um uh new police officers. And um, I understand that there is a mix of between male and female uh among those recruits. Also, very popular is the Junior Police, uh, I'm sorry, Junior Public Safety Academy for Police and Fire. This is always very popular. It's not till June, but I would suggest going to westorange.org to register now. Um, I mentioned this at the last council meeting, Saturday, April twenty-second, has been designated as Drug Takeback Day. Um, but the West Orange Police Department in their lobby has this uh drop-off point is twenty-four seven. It's not uh limited to any specific day. So I would um urge you to uh to go there uh if you have any drugs that you need to drop off. Um, also, uh, this past week, the West Orange Elks donated a fast rescue board to the West Orange Fire Department. And uh, this is valued at three thousand dollars, so it's a significant piece of equipment. It's um used for hazardous materials, active shooter response, water rescue, and other areas of patient packaging and removal. Uh, so this was an important contribution, and the uh West Orange Elks has always been a great supporter of West Orange. Uh, also, uh, the street fair is June third. Uh, we're a couple, we're over a month out, but uh if you go to the downtownwestorange.com under events, they're looking for vendors. Now is the time uh to sign up. It's also worth mentioning that this evening is uh remembrance, Holocaust remembrance. Last evening and this evening, Yom Ashan, uh, and it celebrate or it doesn't celebrate, it commemorates the Holocaust, the six million that were lost, yeah, with um uh, uh, emphasis towards uh eradicating hatred towards any group of people. Uh, and also, uh, we have the uh Israel Israeli flag raising uh coming up on April twenty-sixth here at Town Hall. And um, I'd like to close out with, you know, we have a very important anniversary today. Hundred and sixtieth anniversary eight of April eighteenth, eighteen sixty-three was the first township meeting for the town of West Orange. And I have the actual original minutes right here with me. And I have them displayed on the board here. These were given to me by a resident several years ago. And uh, the meeting was held, it mentions here in the West Orange Schoolhouse. That, of course, is the Saint Mark's School. Uh, and there's a marker in front of uh eighty Main Street depicting that location. Uh, we also have another important anniversary, uh, not quite a hundred and sixty years, but our West Orange Recreation Director Bill Keogh celebrates his hundredth uh thirty. Thirtieth anniversary. Let's have a round of applause. Mr. Keogh is in the audience here. Um, maybe he'd like to come up and say a few words. Um, also, Anthony Puglisi uh uh mentioned that he could not be here this evening. Um, so uh, he asked if I make a couple of quick amount announcements for him. Uh, Saturday, May sixth is Household Hazardous Waste Day. I'm not going to go through this. Uh, there's just too many things to read here, but you can call the number on the screen or go to the website there to find out what is accepted and what is not accepted. I can tell you that you do not have to get out of your car. You place the items in your trunk and you pull up, so it's very convenient. And also, uh, the fishing derby is coming up. And if there's various states at uh several locations throughout Essex County here with the dates mentioned here, probably the closest to West Orange residents would be May twenty-fourth, Roona Park, and Thursday, May twenty-fifth, at the South Mountain Reservation. Again, you can go to EssexCountyNewJersey.org to find out the uh, the exact dates and locations for the fishing derby. And as Council President mentioned, if you have any issues or um uh, you're not happy with a response to public comment, you can email the council@westorange.org. That goes to all all council members. And of course, you can contact me and I'll be glad to share any information uh that was presented here this evening. Uh, Mr. Keogh, would you care to say a few words? Okay. Council President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan.
Excuse me, excuse me, Council President. Mr. Fagan, how long was that um, that first council meeting? I'm just curious what time it got over at.
Uh, it says here that it lasted thirty minutes. No.
It's not timestamped.
It doesn't say, um, but I I I do not know, but thank you for asking the question. You can always rely on Pete.
All right. So is there anyone in council chambers that would like to make public comment? Now would be the time. Madam Mayor?
Thank you.
Again, thank you, Council President. Seemed a perfect segue because Joe had so much information already to share. And I thought it was important because I have been fielding, fielding. and I thought it was important because I have been fielding fielding calls and emails, and I know you have two on West Essex Highlands. So I know the word of institutional knowledge has been mentioned a couple of uh times this evening, but I did want to explain because I I have been on planning board for twenty years. So because I have been fielding these calls, I thought it would be important to provide information, a synopsis of this uh history for not only council colleagues, but for the community and residents in that area. Uh, which started in two thousand and fifteen when Garden Homes presented an application for the planning board to build one hundred and thirty-six single-family homes on a one hundred and twenty-acre parcel. That is what we know as West Essex Highlands condominium community. Uh, this is one hundred and twenty acres that sits behind that, which they also own. After months of testimony and deliberation, the application was denied by the planning boards for different varying reasons. After years of litigation, a new application was submitted proposing a seven hundred and eighty unit mid-rise apartment in across three buildings. Now, review of the township engineering firm concluded that the developer had not addressed the public in fact caused by the maximum number of units. The township has always been in compliance with our affordable housing obligation. In two thousand and fifteen, the law on COLA, the council on affordable housing, changed. The Superior Court assigned a mediator to settle an agreement with both Garden Homes, the owners of the property, and Fair Share Housing Center. This order of compliance was followed by an extensive two-year mediation process involving Special Mount Laurel Court Master Elizabeth McManus, myself, former Councilman Joe Krikovia, Council Township Planner Paul Greifel, the West Essex Highlands Condominium Association Board of President at that time, and Council for West Essex Highlands Association, the Township's Legal Counsel Richard Trank, and a Fair Share Housing representative. Garden Homes intervened to become a party in the Superior Court judgment, offering to help the township meet the new affordable housing obligation. Throughout this mediation process, thanks to the efforts of Mr. Trank, the township secured the affordable housing expertise of Shirley Bishop and the expertise of our township's compliant in environmental compliance officer, Wayne DeFeo, to help formulate a plan to preserve as many trees and as much natural habitat as possible. Throughout this mediation process, special attention was paid to that twenty-five acre steep slope to avoid impact on the surrounding neighborhoods. During the mediation process, special attention was focused on agreement that any and all trees that might be removed would require on-site comprehensive supervision. In two thousand and twenty, the township, West Essex Highlands and Condominium Association, executed a settlement agreement, and the township council adopted a resolution approving that settlement. From these privately-owned one hundred and twenty acres, it was determined that sixty-one of those acres are developable, and the owners are proposing that only twenty-nine acres will be disturbed with a three-to-four building configuration with luxury apartment community, and twenty percent of the unit book units will be affordable, according to law. Most recently, residents within the two hundred-foot radius of that site have received letters from Echo Science, so that's why you're receiving the calls and the emails. That's the environmental firm hired by Garden Homes to submit permits to the New Jersey Department of Protection, the D E P., who determine our wetland buffers and that no wetland approachment for any roadway crossings. I want to say again, Richard Trank has been an integral advocate in helping the township maintain its affordable housing application, and having been involved in the process and as a planning board liaison on other land use application, I urge you to reconsider Mr. Trank's contract. You may not know, again, another land use application, you may not know that Liberty Middle School sits on two hundred and twenty acres that was referred to as the Cana State. That land use application proposed clearing the entire tract for one hundred and eighty-eight single-family homes. Through the township's negotiations and legal counsel, we now have a state-of-the-art middle school, a luxury Bel Air community, plus eleven acres of open space there. And the same will choose with the true for the Oscorp and the Performing Arts Center. That parcel was also proposed to be cleared for single-family homes. Instead, the administration council and the township's legal council, through negotiations, now have luxury townhomes at Crown Point, a magnificent office building situated right at the two-way entrance, and the Ospac Amphitheater adjacent to Chris Crystal Lake, which is built for the township. So I felt compelled um uh and I thought it was necessary that once West Essex Highlands Garden application does come before the planning board, it will still follow the planning process, so I wanted everyone to know that they still find thirty-one to A N. It is not before us, it is still at the D E P., so I just felt it was important that everyone would understand.
Thank you. No, we thank you because we didn't, I personally did not know how to fill those questions. I didn't, certainly didn't have the history. Yeah, so I would appreciate it if you could um.
It's as late as our times, I think.
Yeah, 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 so thank you, thank you, and and hopefully that will satisfy the public's inquiry at this point. Again, there is no application before the planning board as of yet, um but we do know and anticipate that something is forthcoming. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, sir, you wanted to come for a public comment? Um, you, yep. No, 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 it's totally fine. The the mayor just jumped in and gave us a presentation before you, so thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, um, my name is Yoshi. Um, I'm a resident of Princeton, New Jersey, but I'm part of the organization Jewish Voice For Peace Central New Jersey. Um, I wanted to come to make public comment last meeting, but I was unable to due to existing conflict. Um, but uh I noticed in the presentation of events coming up in West Orange is one celebration of Israel Independence Day or a flag raising of the Israel flag for seventy-five years of quote-unquote independence. And I find this to be an extremely uh bad taste, considering this evening. We have um heard so many wonderful love and uh expressions of solidarity with those who have been marginalized in our society, and I think this is a value that is like very important in this country, in the United States, where we are we have enshrined in our cons uh in in our Declaration of Independence that all men are created equal. Uh, now, uh, we noticed that it had disappeared from the calendar listing on the website. So we were uh uh somewhat hopeful that this may have been removed after uh West Orange City had uh thought better of it, considering the testimony from the last meetings that it was unwise to be supporting uh a celebration of a country which has, since its very founding, been premised on settler colonialism, the uh explosion of seven hundred fifty Palestinians from their land, their homes, demolished over five hundred villages, and to this day, the descendants of Palestinians expelled in this way have not been able to return to their home, to their lands. Most recently, and I'm I'm a bit of a a news junkie, but I think like this is a a a chamber of many smart, educated people who have been listening to radio programs like NPR, and I've heard about the uh beatings that Israeli military has been meeting out against Palestinian worshippers worshiping during the holiest month of Ramadan. And the Israeli military has also denied Palestinians who live in Gaza from free travel to their churches in Jerusalem to worship. So I asked the city of West Orange, what are you doing that you are advertising this celebration of Israeli independence, which is really just a celebration of apartheid? No less than three human rights organizations, Amnesty International, Human Rights Watch, and the Israeli Human Rights Group, Fitzilim, have concluded that Israel is practicing apartheid. I earnestly implore that you have put any involvement with this uh celebration of Israeli apartheid, and I yield my time back to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate your time. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Council President, and members of the council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name's Bob Davidson, and I'm the Chief Executive Officer of the Mental Health Association, and we have offices right across the street here at eighty Main Street. And we have about seventy employees over there, many of which uh live in West Orange, all of which enjoy the community and the shops and and the stores. And I came here not to complain, not because I have a concern, but I came here to say thank you because it's been my experience that West Orange is as compassionate and as caring of a community that I've ever been involved in, particularly when it comes to individuals with severe and persistent mental illness. And I like, I can give many examples of that. I've been at the Mental Health Association for twenty-five years and have worked with West Orange whole time. I can give many examples of that, but I'd like to give uh three specific examples to say thank you. Uh, about fifteen years ago, I got a call from uh Richard Trank because there were some concerns that many of the residents were living uh in homes that could be condemned. Now, these residents suffered from mental illness, and some of the residents on the uh collectives spectrum that we heard about this evening. And West Orange was well within their rights to condemn the facilities, but being the caring and compassionate community that you are, you decided not to. And you reached out to us, and we were able to deploy counselors and social workers to work with these residents. We didn't have a magic wand, it was still a difficult situation, but we were able to make things better. And in fact, most of the residents, not all, but most of the residents were able to remain in their homes. So that was a win for the residents, and it was a win for the community. Then about um eight years ago, once again, I got a call from uh Richard Trank because the town was very concerned about the growing homeless population in West Orange. Now, I will tell you, any many other municipalities take those homeless people and drive them somewhere else, and that's not really dealing with the problem. West Orange chose not to do that. They chose to be proactive and asked us to work with them, specifically the police department and uh and uh with the town social work and public health, and we were able to do that. We certainly have an alleviated homelessness in West Orange, but we've dramatically in decreased it. And then about three years ago, it was in June of two thousand and twenty, I remember that well because I was in my office by myself because the whole whole was at home. And uh Richard Trank, once again, once again called and proposed to me, uh, would you be willing to work in consultation with the mayor at the time, for instance? Proposed to me, would you be willing to work with the police department developing a co-responsing program and a training program to work with the police department so we could better serve our residents, particularly around incident supports? And we all remember tragically what happened in May of two thousand and twenty and what was going on in June of two thousand and twenty. So that was a very proactive response on the part of West Orange. So when we had the initial meeting, I proposed, would you allow us to look at your body cam footage so we can give you recommendations to improve? Not to play gotcha, but to give recommendations to improve. Well, the mayor, the chief, and Richard Trank agreed to that. I almost fell out of my chair because I've been proposing that my whole career, and the answer is always no. But West Orange, in my judgment, is caring, compassionate thing, and said, yes. So I'm here tonight to say thank you to the citizens of West Orange, the mayor and council, and to Richard Trank. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, come forward, please, thank you.
Hello, good evening. Uh, my name is Rashira Jones. I live on Rock Spring Road here in West Orange. Um, I'm a new resident, and I just want to um thank you for recognizing um Autism Awareness Month today. I'm the proud mother of two special-needs daughters, one that is on spectrum and one that has Down Syndrome. And I just um really am excited that I heard um today that there will be some collaboration because being new here in this town, um, I haven't really seen much of that. So I was really hopeful um with what I heard today, and I really look forward to those collaborations. Um, I am a leadership member with WILCPAC because moving here, that's kind of who embraced me first. So I look forward to other programs that are coming. Um, as I mentioned, I have one daughter who is on spectrum, and being that this is Autism Awareness Month, um, the spectrum is very broad. Um, my daughter is into robotics, my daughter is into A I. Um, but it just seems that here I have to outsource to Montclair. Uh, we take her to Caldwell to keep her abreast with the different higher levels of technology, although she is on spectrum. But I also have a younger daughter who is non-verbal. We live on Rock Spring Road, um live near a golf course, and she's, she runs out into the streets. So I would like to know, um, what are the plans on making it safer um in environments and on streets that have special-needs children like mine? And also opportunities for technology for my other daughter, who is on a spectrum, but she's very highly intelligent on a spectrum. So I didn't want to keep too much of your time. I just wanted to um kind of come here for myself to kind of see the sensitivity of the most vulnerable, and right now, being in this Autism Awareness Month, um, those are families like mine. And um, thank you so much, and I'm very hopeful in the collaborations that will be going on between WILCPAC and other organizations here in West Orange. I'm happy to be a resident, and everyone have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Hi.
Hi, good evening.
My name is Tova Frye. I'm a resident of West Orange, uh, and I spoke here a couple of weeks ago.
Can you give us your address, please?
It's Six Larkin Circle.
Thank you.
Um, and I spoke here a couple of weeks ago about this planned uh celebration of Israeli independence uh and flag raising. And frankly, I am a bit concerned uh that, number one, there's been no response because we submitted written letters in addition to speaking here at council. Um, myself, I submitted a written letter, and so did the People's Organization for Progress submitted a written letter, and I believe uh the D S A uh Palestine Working Group submitted a written letter, and we've gotten no response as to our concerns about this. Uh, so that's one reason I'm, and I know you don't respond during public comment, but to the written letters, I thought we would see, receive a response. Also, um, after we left, um, um, a number of us spoke uh on this issue, I was listening to the um video re- um recording of what happened after we left. And I was really disappointed to see, um, people were hugging other other people as if we had committed some kind of terrible thing by speaking out about a human rights issue that is well documented. As a um previous speaker talked about, there are three um well-known human rights organizations that have declared the state of Israel an apartheid state. And um frankly, I'm not aware of uh flag-raising ceremonies and celebrations of independence for, for example, South Africa or other countries around the world. So uh it is a political statement that you're making when you support this one country that and and I remind you that I am Jewish myself, I'm the daughter uh I'm of Holocaust survivor survivors, and my grandparents and a lot of my aunts and uncles were killed in concentration camps. So this has absolutely nothing to do with antisemitism, not at all. I am not antisemitic, and this is a political issue about the state of Israel, which is a government that has policies that are oppressing Palestinian people that has a history of having driven Palestinian families from their home. My own personal history is one of that, where my parents My own personal history is one of that where my parents wanted to come to the US um after World War Two and were denied entry because of quotas against Eastern European Jews. So they wound up uh arriving uh in what had just become the state of Israel uh penniless uh and some Israeli soldiers stole a, a home from a Palestinian family and gave it to my parents. And that's where I was born. And that's a microcosm of what's been going on there ever since the seventy-five years of independence uh so-called of the Israeli state. So what I'm asking is that why are we um making an exception as if it's a political support to have this event and to sponsor it? Uh, uh, it ties the township of West Orange as a political support to this country that every day is in the news right now. They have built walls. I mean, we're, we're talking apartheid. We're talking separate roads where Palestinian people cannot travel on the same roads as Jews, where the, where the government of the state of Israel has declared that they want to make all of Palestine from the river to the sea a Jewish state. And where does that leave the Palestinians? And the fact that I can go to Israel anytime I want and welcomed with open arms. But if a Palestinian person tries to return to their homeland, they are not allowed. So with all of that, I'm just asking um the town council and the mayor to recognize that by supporting this so-called celebration, it's a political act and it's a wrong political act. And I think you need to reconsider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. By. We appreciate you. Anyone else in council chambers that, yes, please come forward?
Lorraine Mears, thirty-seven Gregory Avenue.
What was your last, your last name again?
Mears.
First name.
Mayor McCartney, council president and council member. Thank you in advance for allowing me to focus your attention on a grassroots issue that is, in my opinion, at the core of good local government. My husband and I live in the entree of five homes at the corner of Mount Pleasant and Gregory, formerly known as the Old Millie Estate. Over the years, one neighbor, for whatever inexplic- inexplicable reasons, has consistently refused to comply with rumorous common sense town ordinances. Three years ago, we, along with our good neighbors, reached out to the township and then Mayor Parisi for help in seeing that those codes were enforced. At that time, Mr. Trank and Mrs. Gary Adams, the township zoning official, came to the properties to personally assess the situation. Shortly after that, Mrs. Gary Adams issued numerous summonses for code violations. And Mr. Trank, representing the township, adeptly litigated the challenges to them in the municipal court. We quickly learned that litigation was a slippery slope, brought with many twists and turns, and didn't necessarily deliver the hoped-for outcome on demand. Through it all, though, Mr. Trank has been steadfast in his pursuit of justice. He has kept us advised of what was happening and has always made himself available for questions. He is, in our experience, a consummate professional with a commanding knowledge of the law. And he has worked diligently with his team, Mr. Moon and Mr. Jengaro, to see that the statutes were properly enforced. He is a credit to himself, to his law firm, and to the township as their representative council. My husband and I came here this evening to thank the township for its ongoing efforts to ensure that the codes as written continue to be enforced. And to personally thank Mr. Trank for his untiring efforts to see that the job gets done. Thank you for listening and for allowing me to spotlight what is, in my estimation, good local government at work.
Thank you.
Hello, Nicole Ruffo, Overlook Avenue. I'm here tonight to celebrate some collaborative work that's happening for safety in West Orange and the Gregory School District area. I would say Gregory, Roosevelt and Hazel, a group of concerned parents. Um, I have four children of my own, noticed very dangerous situations on Gregory Avenue. Our cars were speeding down and our children are on corners. There's not proper crosswalks. And these come, things were being brought by email and just concerns for years. But finally, we've been able to make some headway and we have had meetings um with the mayor, with the town, with, I think I spotted the town engineer in the back who's been in our meetings. Um, and we are making headway and it's really exciting because it's in honor of, especially Nikhil Badlani, who um tragically was, was killed in a car accident. And I know you know the Badlani family, all of you very well. And it was him actually who sparked kind of the biggest change of this because I was talking to the crossing guard, just, you know, as a person venting about the problems on our corner. And she said, you know, I think that Nikhil, when he was in third grade at Gregory School, made a petition for safe crossings across Gregory Avenue. And we were able to locate the Badlani family, found the petition and shared it with us. It's on our petition that we have shared publicly, which has over seven hundred signatures for these safe, safety concerns we wanted to address. Um, so already we've made some headway. We had a great meeting in March with um Mayor McCartney and the engineer and Essex County, um just talking about what Essex County can do, what town of West Orange can do, what we can do together. And we've already added, just this last couple of weeks, the slow down, this is your speed on north and south of Gregory School on Gregory Avenue. And I have to say, I've been very pleased to be following people and watching the brake lights come on as soon as that happens, right in that curve when you enter West Orange. Um, so there's a long list. Um, the petition is, is out on social media and there's a very long list of requests um that we hope to continue to work together and, and make them happen for the safety of our children and really for all of our community members. Because um, you know, it just, that's, we need people to be able to cross the street and there's no safe crossings in some places. Um, the speed limit is high. There's um just problems happening left and right. So I'm just really excited about the progress we're making and that it's finally going to happen. I'm leaving Gregory School this year after being there for like a hundred years. Um, so uh I will be glad to, to see these things come into place, even though I'll be moving on to other older schools. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ruffo.
Council President, I just wanted to follow up on that quickly. Nicole, thank you for the participating in the meetings, but just a follow-up that the DOT is coming out next Thursday to do a field assessment. And um we're looking forward to that. So I was glad and I know that you recognize the engineer who has been instrumental in that. And it will encompass Hazel, Roosevelt, Gregory and Seton Hopra. So it's a nice field assessment and we'll get more results. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Brick?
Good evening.
Yes.
Mike Brick, Nineteenth Colony Drive West, West Orange. I'm here as a private citizen and also chairman of the West Orange Environmental Commission. And I want to thank the uh president and the council and the officers and Mayor McCartney for having a public session like this. So the reason I'm here is both as a representative of town business and some personal observation. And I'm here to talk about our new town ordinance and also in defense of our new town forester, Walter Kip. So I want everyone to know that right now we're almost finished with the new town ordinance concerning our trees. And Walter has been working with us diligently. Also, Sue Scarpa, who is our coordinator in town, works with us and has been an important liaison to the council and is actually part of our efforts and has made very solid contributions to our discussions about how to increase the town and increase the tree ordinance to be more effective. And our aims are to protect the tree canopy while preserving citizens' rights and their private property. It's, it's a, it's a delicate balance. And we know we have to preserve the trees and at the same time, we can't make an odious burden on our property owners in this land. Um, we will soon be representing, we will soon be presenting a revised ordinance for a new round discussion with the council. So look forward to that. We, we look forward to our work being analyzed, discussed and hopefully adapted. Um, now concerning Walter Kip, um, and this is the personal part. A few council meetings ago, during public comment, a citizen called on Zoom and um accused Walter Kip of declaring trees to be cut down to generate business for his own tree company, The Harmony Tree Care Company. It is located in South Jersey, has never done business in West Orange and is not even licensed in our town. I verified that with our engineering department this week. I am just looking at my report. So this verbal attack on a town employee, you may want to get page two. It was not the first time a citizen or a group of citizens have made unfounded claims against a town forester. Our previous town forester had similar claims made against. They continue to slander. And if we do not defend against these malicious statements, we allow them to grow and take away for the wrong. Um, I would like to read you Commandment Number Nine of the Ten Commandments in the Old Testament because I had to make myself aware of the exact wording of it. The old adage, "Sticks and stones may break my bones, but words will never hurt me," is not true. Words can do a great deal of damage to those who have been slandered. Slander is making a false verbal statement that damages someone's reputation. Slander is different, different slander differs slightly from libel and that libel is a written defamation power. Slander is only spoken. The Bible says a lot about slander in both the Old and the New Testaments, Proverbs ten eighteen and Peter's two and one. Slander is so high on God's list of wrongs that he included it in the Ten Commandments in Exodus in the Torah twenty sixteen. The Ninth Commandment says, quote, "You shall not bear false witness against your neighbor," unquote. Bearing false witness includes slander because of the untruths being spread. Slander is simply lying about someone with the intent of causing others to view that person in a negative light. Slander is malicious lying and God hates lying. Since God is the author of truth, anything untrue is in opposition to his nature and therefore repulsive of him. Both slander and gossip are wrong and scripture often condemns them together and they get close. Slander takes gossip to a whole new level. Gossip collects someone's secrets and passes them to others. Slander makes up its own secrets and broadcasts them wherever they will do the most harm. So I'm asking the town council to declare their state, their stand against unfounded statements meant to harm another without any truth. If we do not, there is another biblical quote, "He who loses by the sword dies by the sword." This council needs to stand on the higher moral ground, representing all the citizens of West Orange and fight slander wherever it occurs. I thank you for listening to me. I felt this was important enough to bring to the council because it upsets me that we have these statements made that are unfounded, untrue. And you have to listen to them because we have free speech in this country. But the council needs to make a stand when they realize that there is no truth to these statements that damage the character and the, and the jobs and the businesses of our townspeople. I really thank you for listening. Please take it to heart and let's do something about. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brick.
Good evening. I'm Richard Scott, Southern Federal Road. Uh, before I make my statement, I want to help me to God for the young man who was shot in the head in Kansas City, Ralph Yow. Last week, Alice Byrne, the attorney for the zoning board, at my request, looked into the matter of Bill Noyer, serving consecutive chairman of the zoning board, in clear violation of an ordinance passed by this council in twenty seventeen. Your next stage, that we chair Chris, but the zoning board, you're not fair, competitive term, so I understand that this, I wonder if we want to miss sense about holding the law, that will be the question. Bill Noyer, the chairman of the zoning board, twenty twenty-two, and a year before that, and a year before that, and a year before that, and so forth. In January twenty twenty-three, at a zoning board meeting, I was excluded. Bill Noyer nominated himself to serve another consecutive term as chairman of the zoning board. I brought the matter of, of the law into public discourse earlier this year at this council. Specifically, I stated, no one above the law. Since then, this council decisively voted down a proposal to change the law to benefit one person. Then in March this year, it was magically discovered that the ordinance that was passed in twenty sixteen didn't matter because it conflicted allegedly with the state statute or a, a case law. Alice Byrne, again, the attorney for the zoning board, has concerned, has concurred and communicated with me that she believes Bill Noyer canceled the chair in twenty twenty-three. That is an official position from the official attorney of the zoning board. However, I have spoken to an attorney, who has informed me that the case incited has absolutely nothing to do with the ordinance that this town passed until it's seen. However, I accept as the official attorney for the zoning board, Alice Byrne's decision. Bill Noyer will be chairman of the board again. Here's the thing. The council is considering renewal of the contract for the township attorney. Yet in twenty sixteen, the legal department failed to advise the council that the ordinance it was considering in the past prohibiting former board chairs concerning consecutive terms was in conflict with the statute or case law. In twenty twenty-three, I brought the matter of the zoning board chair taking consecutive terms to public knowledge. Someone on the council attempted to change the law. Yet, why was that necessary? Why didn't the crack legal team tell you you don't have to pass a new ordinance or rescind it altogether because it's in conflict with the state statute or case law? This saying, crack legal department told you that Mayor McCartney could break a tie vote and recently lost a precedent setting case in the Supreme District Court of New Jersey. The contemplation uh to renew or not to renew the contract of the town attorney considered this. The legal department has ill-advised or not advised you at all. Just two months ago, this council again went through another exercise utility, just like it did in twenty sixteen, trying to rescind the law that now they tell you had no teeth anyway. You didn't have to go through all that. Yet you passed the law in twenty sixteen. You tried to overturn it in twenty twenty-three and then suddenly it didn't matter. This is a crack legal team? I don't think so. To me and to a lot of citizens of West Orange, this looks like practicing the law of expectancy rather than practicing the law of competency and the technicality. West Orange Legal Department has engaged in double speak, double talk, left is right, up is down, and written and spelled. We'll just say whatever and make it fit down the line when someone calls about it. That's called playing it fast and loose with the law. Thanks. Here's something that I find extraordinary. New Jersey is the fourth best educated state in America. But two things can be true at the same time. New Jersey is also the fourth New Jersey is also the fourth state with the highest number of public official corruption convictions in America. Maybe that has something to do with legal departments playing fast and loose with the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Anyone else in council chambers? Yes, please. Thank you.
Raj Patel, forty three Conforty.
One more time for us, a little bit slower.
Raj Patel, forty three Conforty.
Raj Patel, forty three Conforty.
Yeah, I'm here to talk about our public advocate or ex-public advocate, Sharap Thapa. Uh, my understanding is, uh, you guys fired him in last meeting or previous meeting uh, without doing any due diligence, without informing the residents. We are just thirty families of Indians living in West Orange, plus in my group. Uh, my understanding was you guys got a small complaint from a small group. Hopefully, you know, we were informed. We would have bought a bigger group to represent us too, and the good things he has done. Uh, and it's really disappointing to know, you know, uh, without listening to the other side, just one side of the group and not listening to the other side and making your decision. And thank you for counseling, you know, Asmat, uh, I think you acknowledged in the last meeting that you guys didn't get enough time uh, to do the due diligence. Uh, I hope you reconsider what you guys did, uh, give us a chance to come back and hear our side of people, you know, in my own group, we have thirty plus families living in West Orange. Uh, please, uh, give us time to bring that people and hear our side of the story and hopefully you will you will reconsider your decision on this. Thank you again.
Thank you. Mr. Patel. Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to? Yes, thank you.
Moan Mal Kumara Shah, Ashland Avenue.
Can you spell your last name for us, please?
Uh, S H A H. Um, this council, and and particularly the newly elected council, um, consistently send messages of diversity. Um, and when we had a diverse attorney, um, with with, uh, um, the township, um, it was somehow, he was somehow fired. Uh, and as Raj had mentioned, um, you know, without any due diligence. And, you know, as I stand on this podium, um, you know, I see a portrait of President Barack Obama, who really took this country to new levels of diversity. And I think some of the actions that the council, um, you know, or some members of the council um, took in essentially firing Sarab uh, took us steps back from that. Um, and and I think, you know, I want, I do want to applaud, uh, the mayor and and council president Williams um, and councilwoman, uh, Castellino for fighting for the South Asian community of West Orange and for Sarab Thapa. But, uh, there are elements of disappointment within the council, especially with respect to, uh, this firing uh, without any, uh, due diligence, uh, or discourse. And it just, uh, questions, uh, the, uh, intent in terms of diversity that's constantly being spoken of. Uh, thank you for the time and have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Shon. Anyone else in council chambers? Yes, sir, Mr. Norton.
Good evening, Mayor McCartney, Council President Williams, members of the council. I am Phil Noyer. I am here as a citizen of this community. I reside at eight oh five Smith Manor Boulevard. I own that property. I live there. I have been here in West Orange just about fifty years. I'm the proverbial street kid from Brooklyn. I served in the United States Navy for four years, and upon my enlistment being up, I moved to West Orange. I've been here since nineteen seventy three. And in nineteen seventy three, I had the great privilege of being appointed the municipal law clerk for this township. I've worked under two township attorneys, Vincent Mangino and the late Milton Malkin. It gives me a certain perspective on some of the issues that are being discussed by this council regarding the legal department and legal services for this community. During my tenure with the township, uh, legal department in seventy three to seventy six, I wrote every ordinance, I wrote every resolution, I attended every council meeting. That is my perspective. In my forty six years of legal practice here in Essex County, New Jersey, I have worked with more municipal attorneys than I can count. I must tell you flat out that when I first met Richard Trank, it was oil and water. I found him to be abrasive and aggressive and just not the kind of person I wanted to deal with. I got over that. I continued to work with him. And I now find that while I may still consider him to be a bit abrasive sometimes, it was his aggressiveness that I discovered is really passion. Passion for this community. You could not find a more dedicated and devoted attorney to represent all of your interests than Richard Trank. As I said, I've worked with many legal departments. Our legal department over the past twenty five years has been highly professional, focused on one thing and one agenda only, what's best for West Orange. Understand what the attorney does. We as attorneys, we don't make decisions. We follow the guidance of our bosses, of our clients. In the case of this community, it's the administration and the council. So that when a decision is made by this group, this body, it is the attorney who has to implement it. He doesn't make the decisions. He carries out your will. That is his obligation. And that is what Mr. Trank has done for twenty five years. Uh, a lot of criticisms have been raised because of the decision of the New Jersey Supreme Court recently in the matter brought by our citizen Kevin Malanga, and I appraise Mr. Malanga for his endurance in wanting to move that case forward. If you take a look, if you take a step back and you read the case and you look at what's happening in West Orange, we may have lost that battle, but we won the war. We're getting sixty four affordable units, we're getting a new library. And what the Supreme Court did was put a limitation, excuse me, on how redevelopment can proceed in the state of New Jersey, nothing to do really with West Orange. They wanted to make a statement, they made it. And I, like I said, I praised Mr. Malanga for following through on his desire. But in terms of what happened for the benefit of this community, you owe Mr. Trank thanks because he was able to turn on a dime, change gears, and get us exactly what we needed without having to wait for the Supreme Court to make their decision. So I also, uh, this, this is just something that happened in the last couple of minutes. Uh, I've worked with Sarab Thapa. I do not believe that he should be reappointed solely for the sake of diversity. He should be reappointed because he did his job. He did it very well. He was a passionate advocate. He didn't jump in with both feet on day one. He took the time to learn what had to be learned. And he has been very effective as a public advocate on the, excuse me, on behalf of this community. Dealing with Mr. Trank.
Your time is up.
Thank you. Just one last statement, if I may. One last statement. It has been said that this is changed for the sake of change in, uh, not renewing Mr. Trank's contract.
Thank you, Mr. Noah. Appreciate you.
Change for the sake of change alone is an application of leadership. Thank you, Madam.
You're welcome.
Rob Bagoff, seventy seven Clark and Drive, West Orange.
I missed your name, I'm sorry. Your name?
Robert Bagoff.
Oh, thank you.
I also serve as chairman of the planning board of the township of West Orange, and I stand here in support of Mr. Trank. I've worked with him for nine, nineteen years. And, uh, as Mr. Noyer said, we don't agree on everything. But Mr. Trank, one of his greatest values is that West Orange first, West Orange always, West Orange all the time. We can't always agree with everybody who provides us information because they may have other information we don't see. We don't see their evaluation of how things work. To the case that was just brought back from the Supreme Court, the Supreme Court in the state of New Jersey decided to change the wording to cause harm, which harmed two people was never in the legislation. The Supreme Court said to the legislators in the state of New Jersey, we don't like what's going on, go back and fix it. So here is an activist court, whether you like it or not, we follow the rules down to the last letter. We won in a superior court in the state of New Jersey, we won in an appellate division. So you have two higher courts evaluating land use in the state of New Jersey. This is one of the first times the Supreme Court in the state of New Jersey took a land use case and came back against the legislature, not the state, not the township of West Orange. As Mr. Noyer said, we still won. We had a great win. We still got a library. We have many other things in town. We're going to have a senior center. If you look at all the things that we have accomplished over the past nineteen years that I have been on the planning board, yes, West Orange is growing as fast as you possibly can imagine. We are an exquisitely diverse community. And we see from one end of town to the other end of town, towns, homes that go from a hundred and twenty five thousand to over ten million in the same town. We look at these things every day and I marvel, and I'm a kid from Brooklyn. I came from Coney Island. I moved to Maryland, Rhode Island, and now West Orange. Mr. Trank brought me to understand that I told people from the day of sitting right over there, you should join the township, you should come here, you should live here. I was so impressed. Over the years, I brought my practice here. I tell my friends they should bring their practices and bring their business to West Orange. This is a very unique community. Look into the crowd that's sitting around here. How diverse is this crowd? Each person is speaking their mind in order to let the people of the council hear what's going on in town. Secondly, our public advocate is an amazing gentleman. I think that you should rethink, rethink and rehire him. Everything that I've asked him to do, or the people on the planning board have asked him to do, he's come back, he's listened. He is not an activist. He is an intelligent person who listens and makes intelligent statements based on the need of the township, and isn't that what the public advocate is for? Council president, Mayor McCartney, council people, I want to thank you for your service. I know it's not easy to sit up here and listen to all of us. But I thank you for everything that you do every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Corey Dishman, Llewellyn Avenue, West Orange. And my partner Charles, he can speak for himself. Um, despite everything going on, we just wanted to come up here and thank our mayor, uh, town council, all of our elected officials, our first responders, and all of the various members of the local government for the hard work that you do on a daily basis, for the commitment that you've made to the town and to us residents. And just overall for allowing us to be here and to helping West Orange to remain a great pa, a place to live and work.
Thank you.
How's everybody doing? Uh, good to see some faces that I haven't seen in a while. I really just wanted to come up and say hi to everybody. It's been a while. As you know, I do live in Union. My partner is in West Orange. I have three sons. So I am very busy all the time, but whenever I get the opportunity to come out, I want to make sure that I come. Um, hearing everything tonight, it shows how committed everyone is to this town. And that's something that everybody should all hope that where they live is like. No one is going to be in agreeance all the time, but that's what makes this place great. And I mean, not just West Orange, but America. And I think that everyone should continue with their personal opinions, move their point forward, and then eventually we all will reach a common goal. That's all I wanted to say. Everyone just enjoy the rest of your night.
Thank you.
And just one last thing, um, with regards to personal opinions. Sometimes we have to seek first to understand before being understood. So listen to everybody and keep an open mind.
All right, Mr. Kobe. Yes, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Linda Di Lorenzo, and I reside at ninety one Giordano Drive. I've been a rest, a West Orange resident for in excess of thirty seven years. I believe this is my first time ever coming to speak, and I thank you all for giving me the opportunity. I am here to give my support to Richard Trank. Change can be good when it is needed. However, change can also be extremely disruptive. Richard Trank has been our township attorney for at least twenty five years. I was Richard Trank's controller for seventeen years. And I heard that there was a question as to whether or not his contract should be resigned. And I'm here to speak to tell you why I think it should be without a doubt. Richard is a person of the highest integrity, unbelievable morals, and a determination and drive and self motivation that I have never seen before. Richard does what he does for this community because he loves this community. He does not do what he does for this community for the money. Because trust me, the hourly rate municipal attorneys earn is laughable. Further, I think that he has always been willing and has always been a community person and puts West Orange first, always. And he will fight for us and for what is right all the time. Over the years, with the help of the council and the mayors that he has served, he has helped bring amazing things to our town. Ospac for one, Rock Spring Golf Course, Liberty Middle School, Turf Fields, more recently, the new library, which includes additional senior living space. You may or may not know that while we have the distinct advantage of having our township attorney also be a resident of West Orange, Richard's professionalism, level of experience, dedication and fight is sought out by other communities. He is also the municipal attorney for other communities because they can see how important it is to have someone like him fighting your battles. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to have public comment? Mr. Fagan?
Uh, council president, we have fifty seven attendees and we have three, uh, individuals wishing to make public comment.
All right, if you just give me one moment, we still have one more person in the council chambers. I apologize, I jumped the gun before she was able to raise her hand. Please come forward.
Sheila Lefkowitz, seven oh three Pleasant Valley Way. Susan Scarpa had requested for the cannabis ordinance to be placed on the agenda today. But I was reviewing the agenda and I see it didn't happen. I'm not sure why. I just want to say that it's something that is being talked about in town. And I would like to see it, uh, addressed. And I would like to see the rules being followed. If there were any rules that weren't followed, where there were some extenuating circumstances, I don't know, but, uh, it's not clear to me. As we get closer to discussing our town budget, I'm hearing a lot of, uh, in the town hall about the rising costs of garbage collection and recycling. I see housing going up in Essex Green. And I wonder how much income we expect to gain from this new project. And I'm also wondering how much income we are expecting from our marijuana dispensing. And I'm also wondering how much income we are expecting from our marijuana dispensaries. And I'm hoping that the income we are generating from these wonderful new projects and businesses in town will offset our expenses significantly. So taxes should not rise more than two percent. So many of my neighbors have lost jobs or have had their hours cut. Many have lost jobs and are struggling to buy essentials such as groceries and fuel and buy materials and services to do home maintenance and repairs. While we are speaking about inflation, gas prices in West Orange are higher than most towns. Why? Is there anything we can do about this on the local level? From a local level, is there anything we can do to get discounts for seniors for basic needs items? There are so many local seniors who do not qualify for food stamps but need a break because they're on a fixed income in this inflationary time. I hope that we can resolve to discuss and pass the cannabis ordinance that will produce businesses whose profits will help us balance our town budget without a huge tax increase to our residents. And that we can work together to continue to make West Orange a town where people can enjoy their residences and walk their children to school and attend and worship services in a pleasant manner. We need to make sure that the money that West Orange residents earn is not unduly diminished by local taxes. And we can even go further on a local level to protect our seniors from rising inflation that affects vital transportation, nutrition, and the enjoyment of a peaceful residence. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lefkowitz. Yes.
Rachel Klein, Howell Drive.
Rachel Klein?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, I'm not sure if I'll be able to make it to the next couple meetings.
I wonder why.
We're, we're very, we're can, the reason I think the West Essex Highlands Incorporated, um, generated all this panic. Um, those of us who live there have noticed that they've begun to put up, um, private property signs, which they've never done before. So we're afraid they're going to start making moves prior to the, um, from the, to the D E P's decision. We're asking everyone to write to D E P if you're concerned about the wildlife displacement, the water, all the, the possible trees coming down, all those different environmental impacts and effects. Um, especially for those who don't live anywhere, they don't live close enough to get the letter, but they will be affected by anything that happens up at the top. And when this does come before you, whenever that is, I am for you to come and see it. See what we're talking about. I'll walk with you. And I'll walk with you from the places of proposing putting these homes to the nearest large streets. So you could see just how narrow the actual places that they had to, you know, four hundred more cars to eight hundred more cars, all going to Oldham Drive to Eagle Rock Avenue. They're not going to be able to come down Howell to go to Pleasant Valley Way. So, you know, just, that's why I think you're getting all the calls. I think it's, um, because Garden Homes Incorporated, West Essex Town Incorporated, whoever they are, they've, they've made a move last week. They've been asked by everyone, police to put up private property signs. They never did. They've, um, they don't manage their sewer line. We smell their sewer lines still. They did not properly close two out of six sewer lines. So, um, I think that's, that's what everyone's, uh, was calling in and worried about. Because we know it's in front of the state. We know. We got the letter. But all the people on Rosemont, Mayfair, even Estro, they don't qualify for a letter. And, uh, and no one goes up there to see where they put the signs. It's all the way up at the top. Of Howell and Verona, where they put the private property signs, which again, they've never done in forty years. They've never done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, does that complete public comment from council chambers? All right, Mr. Fagan, now we'll take the calls from the.
Yes, Council President, we have some several members in the Zoom audience, uh, wishing to make public comment this evening. Hamila Uva, forgive me if I mispronounce your name, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Hemali Uva and I live on Gregory Avenue.
I'm sorry, can you spell that for us, please?
Yes, Hemali, H E M A L I, and the last name is B H U V A.
Thank you.
And I want to thank Ms. Mayor, uh, the council members and the township, township officials for their service. And today I'm here to share my experience with Mr. Trank and his team. A few of the neighbors had caught compliance issues with the property owner. And I have observed Mr. Trank work on behalf of the township in order to bring in compliance. Uh, Mr. Trank and his team has utilized the resources available to him and put in a lot of effort to ensure that the township ordinances are implemented and followed. I am very appreciative for the necessary involvement that he was able and utilized, utilized and advising of our, in advising of our zoning official, uh, Ms. Adams, Police Officer, Police Chief, uh, Abbott and Fire Chief Vacune in an effort to enforce the ordinances. Mr. Trank and his firm has been very responsive in addressing the concerns and are always open to communications. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Uva.
Joy Church of God, please state your full name and address for the record. Welcome to the meeting.
I apologize for the name on the, uh, Zoom. It's actually um, Bishop Doug Adams, nine Westover Terrace, and I am uh, commenting as a resident and private citizen of West Orange, and I am not speaking for Joy Church. Joy Church has no um, uh, political, uh, uh, agenda or initiative uh, pertinent to this town council meeting. Uh, what I would like to say is, of course, thank you to all of uh, our elected officials, but also those who are serving as vendors and employees in the town. Um, as I am fully aware, it's very difficult to do the bivocational thing well. Um, and when you have multiple demands on your time, um, doing the research, the study, the background, engaging in the rigor of the dialogue to create, uh, cohesive synergy uh, to accomplish and move government and the people's business forward. Um, is more than a notion and the reality is that's why more people vote than people run. Um, and so I want to thank you for that. Uh, of primary interest, I know there's a lot of things going on in town. For me, the primary interest is the infrastructure and organizational conversations that have gone on in town with the individuals who will be hired, rehired, contracts renewed and positions. Um, and my understanding is I've not been in West Orange for fifty years or thirty years, but we're creeping on it. We're, we're twenty-six. Uh, and I've seen West Orange grow dramatically from a town that didn't even have middle school sports to all the things that occur in town and all of the developments that have happened in town. And I know it's because we have had great leadership in various capacities from the mayor and the town council, and I know that the partnership and working together is what has allowed that to happen. But I am in particularly concerned about Mr. Trank's role and the conversations around that. And primarily because my understanding of the dialogue um, leads me to the three areas that have seemed to come into question. Some have commented about Mr. Trank personally. And I know that can't be a council consideration because that would simply be bad governance. Some have commented about his professional capacity and the things that he's done. And when I look at his track record over the many years, um, although there have been some instances here recently and some instances of maybe, uh, misadvice by the legal department, not necessarily or specifically Mr. Trank. Um, his track record and his body of work over the years uh, seems to have been very, very effective and impactful. Hence, all of the development and all of the litigation that of the township has won. Even the case that he lost here recently, my understanding is that there were several courts that agreed before the Su- Supreme Court made their decision. So it's very difficult to count that as a loss if it's not directly rejecting, um, the petition, but restating how things should go in the future. The only other consideration then, and I would hate to think that this is the case, is political. And that has to do with the fact that Mr. Trink has been effective in so many ways in previous administrations that it, if these, uh, appointments or these hires are at the recommendation of the mayor, uh, the person elected by the town uh, to lead our town into the future and through these difficult conversations. If these are the individuals that she believes, uh, are best equipped and experienced to help her with that. If there's not a real issue with the body of his work over the entirety of his time, then the question becomes, why would we handicap this new mayor at a critical time in town when there are so many conversations? So many challenges and so many projects at hand. Why would we cripple her in her leading the town through that by having to shift legal counsel and lose the knowledge base that has been acquired by Mr. Trank? The expertise that's been acquired by him and the network that he's developed. And so, can't be personal. I'm still waiting to hear professional. And I just assume that it's not political. And so my hope and understanding is that we will give the mayor what she needs to do what the entire town voted for her to lead us through. And with your support, if there are issues with those who are working with her, you will be able to support her and them to address and correct them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
John Blatton, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Um, my name is John Blanton. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Forest Hill Road here in the township. Um, and before I start, I just want to thank Mr. Gro- uh, Gross, uh, for resolving some concerns that I had. I want to thank you for, when I do call you, you get back to me or you take my call. So I want to say thank you very much. And also the Chief Abbott, uh, I think I saw him in the chambers. And I want to thank him as well for doing the same. I'm sitting here with my family this evening and my two sons have grown up in this township. Uh, they both went to elementary school, to high school, uh, and graduated here. And I'm so glad to hear that at this season of this township, that we can have the conversations on diversity, inclusiveness and equity. Uh, because that was some of the challenges that I experienced, uh, when I first came here. Um, in terms of people understanding those very three words. And so I'm glad we at the point that if you look at the acronym, D I E, that we didn't die in the interim. That we've grown enormously, uh, in our township. And, you know, some of the leaders that are sitting in chambers, uh, we've had several conversations on this issue. Um, and so I just wanted to say that before I started. Uh, my questions this evening is first and foremost, is West Orange Township hosting a Juneteenth celebration this year? Um, I also would like, as I was sitting here with my family, there was someone hired uh, to be appointed and as Mr. Gross's second in command within his office. I didn't catch the name and the title, formal title of the person as the audio at that time wasn't very clean. Uh, so if you could tell me, uh, us rather, who that individual is. And lastly, if I could get clarity on the resolution um, that you guys took action on on March twenty-first, uh, eighty twenty-three, one one-two dash twenty-three, one one-three, that's twenty-three, uh, which was the resolution rescinding various professional services um, for our township attorney, Richard Trank's law firm. If I can get clarity on that, I had called today. Um, Mr. Gross was able to answer some of my questions. I asked for Mr. Kaiser to give me the call to clarify. I didn't hear from them. So for those of you that know me, I'm one that if you don't get back in touch with me, I'll bring it forth publicly. And so, um, in terms of some of the things that people talked about tonight, I look at this relationship as an employee, employer. And I think that the council has an opportunity to interact with our employees much differently than us as the employer, as the, uh, citizens of this town. And just like we said with the mayor, we elected her to entrust her, uh, with what she does. We also have an elected council. And we have to trust our council that we've elected to carry out the wishes of the constituents as well, because they are our elected officials. And although we may disagree on things, uh, let's not be disagreeable uh, in terms of decisions that are made. I disagree with a lot of decisions that have been made with our council uh, in the leadership of this town, but I would never be disagreeable. And I see the mayor sitting here this evening at the last meeting, uh, uh, that I view, uh, there was some dialogue between Mr. Kaiser, the council and Mr. Gross. And the clarity, everything pointed to you, um, in terms of some things regarding our fire department and police department in terms of some type of contractual agreements. And the attorney said that they follow your lead. And so if we're absorbing enormous prices for legal issues, I would just like you to address where we are because the council clearly stated they wanted these matters to be resolved. I don't know the internal, uh, logistics of it. Uh, but would like to get some clarity, uh, from you since you are attending the meeting of this evening in terms of where we are because the attorneys, just like the various attorneys got up and said they follow the lead of their customers or their client. Um, the attorneys on the, on the last meeting said they follow your lead. And that's the reason why we're still absorbing, uh, these legal matters with our fire and the police departments regarding whatever the contractual, uh, agreements that you guys are negotiating. That's it. I thank all of you for your service. You're certainly doing something that I would not want to do. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for your understanding. Uh, because realizing all of the different people that you have to deal with in this thing that we call diversity, inclusion and equity, um, at a time such as this and the culture and climate that we're in. Uh, I certainly appreciate everything that you guys do for us. God bless you and heaven's smile upon you.
Thank you, Mr. Blan.
Uh, Zasha Kademi, please state your full name and address for the record. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, Zasha Kademi, four Dawes Avenue. And thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm a proud thirty-year resident of West Orange. The Township Council of the Township of West Orange finds that trees are among the township's most valuable natural resource assets, greatly enhancing the appearance of the township and contributing to its suburban residential character. The integrity of the township and regional water resources is substantially affected by development on constrained land, tree removal, soil disturbance, stormwater management, and the general use of land resources. The preservation, protection and planting of trees aids in the stabilization of soil by the prevention of erosion and sedimentation, reduces stormwater runoff and potential damage it may create, increases groundwater recharge, thus enhancing the groundwater supply to streams and wetlands and the yield of water supply wells. Aids in the removal of pollutants from the air and assists in the generation of oxygen, provides a buffer and screen against noise and pollution, provides protection against severe weather, aids in the control of drainage and restoration of denuded soil subsequent to construction or grading, provides a haven for birds and other wildlife, and otherwise enhances the environment, protects and increases property values, conserves and enhances the township's physical and aesthetic appearance, and generally protects the public health and safety as well as the, the general welfare. Numerous governmental, professional, educational and business sources have cited that the importance of trees to our well-being, one acre of four. One acre of forest absorbs six tons of carbon dioxide and puts out four tons of oxygen. Enough to meet the annual needs of eighteen people. And one study, eighty-three percent of railtors express the belief that mature trees have a strong. And moderate impact on the saleability of homes listed for under one hundred and fifty thousand. Our homes listed for over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This perception increased to ninety-eight percent. Healthy, mature trees are said to add an average of ten percent to a property's value. Landscaping, especially with trees, can increase property values as much as twenty percent. The net cooling effect of a young, healthy tree is equivalent to ten room-sized air conditioners operating twenty hours a day. If you plant a tree today on the west side of your home, in five years, your energy bills will be three percent less. In fifteen years, the savings will be nearly twelve percent. Trees properly placed around buildings can reduce air conditioning needs by thirty percent. And can save twenty to fifty percent in energy used for heating. In laboratory research, just visual exposure to settings with trees has produced significant recovery from stress. Within five minutes, as indicated by changes in blood pressure and muscle tension. It is the purpose of this section to protect and foster the existence and health of trees. Growing within the township's borders. To preserve the maximum possible number of trees and the development of a site or lot to protect specimen trees. To encourage innovative design and grading to promote the protection of existing trees and to prevent. To prevent indiscriminate, uncontrolled and excessive removal and cutting of trees. As well as land use activities inconsistent. And with accepted arboricultural practices. Which contribute to the destruction of or permanent injury to trees upon lots and tracts within the township. Um, I would go on for ten more pages, but I am proud to announce that what I've been reading. Um, was. Exactly out of uh the beginning of our own town's ten-page ordinance. So my question is, why then? Town council have so many trees been so casually destroyed or are marked for destruction? Just so we can build straight sidewalks is one thing that I've heard. And the other thing is that they're dangerous to people. Because one man, unfortunately, I'm sorry to say, a branch came down in a parking lot. Uh, you know, that could be staved off by trimming our trees, which is much cheaper than cutting them down. So I ask that we reverse course back to this township's original values and missions. In keeping with our own ordinance and find a way to preserve our trees as our forebearer.
Time is up.
Broke down. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Uh, Mel Valdez, excuse me, welcome to the meeting. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mel Julie Valdez. Um, I live on Elm Street. Um, I am asking, um, I would like to know when Colgate Park and Colgate Field will be included. Um, in the budget for much-needed upgrades. Um, I've seen that many parks in West Orange have been upgraded by, but Colgate Park and Field has been neglected for years. I would like to know how and when this park and playground can be prioritized for the many residents who live in the area. Who only have this park. Um, in the vicinity in order to get fresh air and bring their children to play at the playground. I've seen that every year thousands of dollars are invested to upgrade and improve the Ginny Dunkle Pool that is adjac- adjacent. But Colgate Park and Play and Colgate Park and Field has not been so fortunate. Additionally, I would also like to know when the crosswalks along Franklin and the side cross streets, side streets, um, such as Al, Maple Cherry. Et cetera, will be repainted, um, because they are faded. Um, the also the double yellow line on Franklin Avenue is non-existent. Um, and that, that's dangerous. Many families walk to Playhouse Preschool, the Kids Palace Preschool, and also Washington School. So it is very important to have visible crosswalks. Also, um, a few of the garbage can, cans, a few of the garbage cans that were um placed on Franklin Avenue have been removed but not replaced. Um, I have already submitted a request to the township website, but this request was not acknowledged or has been fulfilled. Additionally, when ra- when it rains, water accumulates on the corner of Chestnut Street with Harrison Avenue. It creates a very big puddle. And i- it, it creates a hazard for any cars that are transversing on Harrison Avenue. And there isn't a sewer there where the water can go to. Um, so I would like that to be prioritized as well, as that is a danger. Um, so what I would like to know also is. When is the township budget going to be available and when is the, the meeting going to be scheduled? Um, because that, I don't see that anywhere on the website as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rachel Hers- Hershey, please state your name and address. Welcome to the meeting. Rachel, can you hear us? Last call, Rachel, can you hear us? Uh, moving on, Council President, uh, Rachel Hershey, uh, please raise your hand again if you resolve your issue. Uh, Sean Gainer, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sean Gainer, seventy-four Reynolds Avenue, Annova, New Jersey. Good evening, Council. First, I just want to thank the township for employing me for nearly twenty-six years as a firefighter. I appreciate it. Um, also, I want to thank Mayor McCartney, Mr. Rutherford and uh Mrs. Scarpa for their time at the parade. And also, uh, Ms. McCartney for her phone call. Are you guys hearing me okay?
Yes, we hear you fine. Thank you.
And I thank Council President for letting me speak tonight. I appreciate it. Uh, I just want to get a couple of things out there. Uh, I know. Uh, a couple, I, I really do like a lot of you, most of you. Um, I just want to get a couple of things out there. I also want to congratulate Bill Keough, who was a staple of West Orange on his thirty years of service. Uh, I also want to congratulate the uh West Orange Hockey Team. Uh, I grew up with uh former Councilman, uh, Sal Anderton. And I know the goalie jacket is parents, so I want to congratulate them. Um, like I said, I served this community for about twenty-six years. Um, and uh, I recently retired, so I was able to speak my mind, have my First Amendment rights once again. Um, this is mostly uh about, um, I don't know if you've probably heard, but maybe that uh Mr. Gross. Uh, he let me retire without my full pension, even though I paid into it in January. Um, I was awarded, I was awarded it in court. I was worded in court. Um, we want it back. I paid my um portion into it in January. Um, and he did not pay that. I mean, he's a CFO and he's the business administrator. Uh, and he let me retire without that. So, um, his first excuse was that he didn't know. If he can make an ad of quarterly payment, and I don't know if everybody's aware of this. But as we pay into our uh now bi-weekly checks. Um, they take our portion of our pension payments and they save them. I don't know what they do with them, but they put them to the side. And then every quarter, quarter, they'll make a quarterly payment, which is the normal uh pension payment system. That's how it goes. So, um, he wasn't, he, they told me uh through his secretary. Um, that he wasn't sure if he can make an ad of quarterly payment. So, you know, I picked the phone up and I called down to the New Jersey uh Police and Fire Pension System and they said. No, he, he knows he can make a pension payment anytime he wants. Uh, so we figured that out then. It was. When we were told him that, uh, you know, that was false, he changed his uh story and said, well, since the back pay situation was off. He said, the back pay situation was, we said it wasn't really the right amount of money. So he said, until it's the right amount of money. And it's resolved, I'm not going to make the pension payments. Um, do you know the, what we came with the? To re- to resolve that, it was six hundred and two dollars that he owes, he owes me, the town owes me six hundred and two dollars and another fire captain. So he's going to hold my full pension, five months of my pension. Because he owes me six hundred and two dollars. I mean, he's the CFO. Shouldn't he know to the penny? How much money he owes me? And the rest of us? And I'm glad, I mean, a couple of speakers below, how much money is this costing the taxpayers? And on the way out the door, Mr. Gross? You're going to? Send me off without my full pension? Now I gotta go back and, you know, find out how much more and stuff. We gotta redo that. I mean, come on, I serve this town. I'm a veteran. I mean, are you even supposed to be the CFO? And the business administrator? Should you be in that position? Could be because if I'm going to bring up. Um, let's, let's bring it up. It's the uh, under the direction and supervision of the mayor, a business administrator shall. Let's just skip A and we'll go to B, supervise the administration. Of each of the departments of the township government, provided that such supervision. Shall not extend to the exercise of the control function in the management of the finances of the township. Which is required by Section three eighteen of the Charter, New Jersey S A forty. That forty sixty-nine Alpha Forty-eight. To be exercised by an officer of the township. Other than a business administrator. And I'm sorry, everybody. I, I, I love West Orange. I grew up in West Orange, thirty-year resident of West Orange. Well, minus the four years I served this country. I mean. Just want to know, I just have one question for John Gross. Why did you not pay my? Why did you not pay my, I was retiring. I'm done with it. I'm trying to get away from you, people like you. People like Robbie Parisi. I'm trying to get away. I got away. I served. I was very, I was injured so many times. I had cancer a few times for being a firefighter. Why couldn't you just let me go and make?
Your time is up. Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments.
Uh, Rachel Hershey, let's try it again. Please state your name and address for the record. Please unmute yourself, Rachel. I'm sorry, we cannot hear you. We'll have to move on. Uh, please, uh, email council uh with your questions. Uh, we'll try you one last time uh as the last uh person in the queue. Uh, Jill, uh, the name you entered the meeting with, please state your name and address for the record. Jill, can you hear us? Similar.
Uh, yes, hello?
Yes, yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi.
Please state your name, your full name and address for the record. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. My name is Jill Comerchero. I live at Ford Dunn Road here in West Orange. Um, I moved.
Sorry, what street address was that? We couldn't hear you.
Sure, Ford Dunn. I'm sorry. I, uh, Ford Dunn Road.
Dunn, thank you.
Um. And I'm calling, uh, or I was listening in on the meeting because I li- I've lived in our, West Orange for a few years now. Um, and. I, the other day I noticed that one of my trees had one of the orange splotches on it. Um, which was of great concern because I've come to learn that what those orange splotches mean. So I reached out to our Green West Orange and, um. I was able to meet with Councilwoman Susan Scarpa. She came to my home and we were able to kind of discuss. Um, the orange splotches. I just want to say that a lot of these trees add a lot of, and I know this has been said. But they add a lot of value to the homes and it was a big uh draw to why we moved here. So to see this kind of happening has been very, very concerning. So I was very happy that, um. Councilwoman Susan Scarpa responded and met with me and we were able to discuss this and I hope that. Further um intention can be taken where, and consideration can be taken when determining, um. The value of these trees. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Joyce Rudin, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, uh, good evening, Joyce Rudin, thirty-eight Woodland. Um, first, I, I just want to comment on, it was very disturbing to hear, um, Sean Gainer's remarks. And I really hope that this council listens to, to a gentleman who served our town, who served. Um, our country and really answer, um, his concerns that were so, so well-stated. It's very heartbreaking to hear. Um, tonight in your preliminary meeting. You heard how a new infectious disease health specialist spoke about how ticks are spread in hot weather. She's given us yet another reason why it's important to keep our street trees, which help produce heat islands. Trees lower urban air temperature. Realist streets are known to increase temperatures three to si- seven degrees. These temperatures also significantly impact energy costs to homeowners and consumers. A properly shaded neighborhood. Um, can reduce energy bills for a household from fifteen to thirty-five percent. Tonight, I am representing our Green West Orange, which has been contacted by dozens of families alarmed by the orange spots on their trees. And everybody is asking the question, why are these big trees, which are. Quote, among our most valuable natural resource assets, which according to our ordinance, which was cited in full to you tonight. Why are they being cut down? We've been told it's been to, to, it will be to make street, the, um, the sidewalks straight. Why are we expending money on tree removal when it's much cheaper to save a tree rather than kill it, both in the short term and in the long term? Tools are our greatest asset to holding back the tide of flooding, noise and pollution. Trees absorb the first thirty percent of precipitation through their leaf system. And another thirty percent is absorbed through the root structure. One price of removing street trees is local flooding. In view of the value of the street trees, I would like to know. What the exact cost is for removing these trees. I'd like to know whether this money has been allocated. I'd like to know whether there has been a bidding, a public and fair compet- competitive bidding. For tree removal. Who was awarded this contract? The public deserves to know the exact price of this destruction. Let's not spend our taxpayer money on making straight sidewalks and destroying the beauty and value of our community. Curved sidewalks are more elegant and more polished. There are other methods that we can employ. To save the large old trees in our town. We must preserve the trees at any price. Go around the tree. Let's build our sidewalks around the trees and preserve the integrity of the tree and their tree roots. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Rudin.
Uh, Kevin Malanga, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hmm, thank you, Mr. Fagan, Kevin Malanga, Ridge Road. Good evening, Council President, President, members of the council. Last week, the New Jersey Law Journal had an editorial. And the headline of the editorial read. West Orange Library Redevelopment Case Offers Important Reminder. The editorial did not say. That the Supreme Court was an activist court, as you heard Dr. Bagoff say this evening. It did not say that this was a landmark decision, as you heard Mr. Trank say previously. What it did say was that. Situations like this, I'm quoting. Remind us of the old saw. That govern must turn square corners in its dealings with the citizenry. As the court in this case observed, it takes more than a statutory citation. And a claim that it has been satisfied to meet that standard. Like all applicants for a redevelopment designation. West Orange had to prove not only that the conditions at the library satisfied the statute. But that those conditions caused actual harm to the public welfare. Failing that, the court had no choice but to upend the in-need of redevelopment designation. This wasn't anything new. It wasn't anything revolutionary. It was simply following the law. The exact language of the law. Which states that the condition must be detrimental to the safety, health. Morals and welfare of the community. The same standard. That the appellate division used. When, in another case that I brought against the township. In which the appellate division overturned. in which the appellate division overturned the designation of the Essex Green and Executive Drive area as an area in need of redevelopment. This was only following the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malanga.
Uh, Mr. Tepor, please state your name and address for the record. Welcome to the meeting.
Uh, good afternoon, uh, good evening, Sir Rob Thapar, the former public advocate. I just wanted to make, uh, I, I, I just wanted to make a comment that, thank you, everyone who, um, came forward and made a statement on my behalf. I, I wasn't expecting that at all. So I just want to say thank you to everyone. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Shapar.
Seth, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, hi, Seth Weissletter, uh, seventeen Howe Drive. Um, I just thought I would join the meeting this evening as my fellow resident Rachel, who spoke earlier about the potential or development in the forest area above our houses. Obviously getting a letter from the D E P that only an engineer can understand and read caused us a lot of concern. We're concerned about the wildlife. We're concerned about the trees, as mentioned. We understand it's owned by private property. However, when I first moved to this neighborhood, I actually thought it was a park. They have beautiful trails back there. Lots of garbage, beautiful trails and not maintained by the owners. So I was very surprised to see a private sign go up. But we're also very concerned about a lot of the water runoff. We have constant water coming down Howe Drive when it's raining and not raining. Uh, we have a lot of, uh, you know, runoff, um, constantly under the ground. Um, and I think that needs to be a high concern. I, you know, most of the council, it's very hard for a non-government person to kind of navigate this. I did some research. It looks like there was some kind of agreement in place between the town and the owners of that property from years ago. I don't know where that stands or what that means to this potential development. But it would be great if some of the council members can meet with our residents here on Howe Drive and in the neighborhood to encourage us, uh, educate us and work together as a partnership to see how we could curtail this development and make it good for West Orange and good for the neighbors and good for the town. So I'll leave it at that and thank you for allowing me to comment this evening.
Thank you.
Uh, Rachel, we will try this one, one more time. Please state your name and address for the record. I'm sorry, Rachel, we cannot hear you. Uh, please, as I indicated earlier, uh, send a email to the town council and they will address your concerns. There's an individual in the Zoom audience who has already spoken for public comment. I'm gonna lower your hand. You do not get the second chance at public comment. Also, please send your, uh, uh, concerns to the, uh, council via email. Uh, Dr. Ron Charles, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Ron Charles, Colonial Wood Drive, West Orange. Um, as the council knows, April is autistic awareness month. So I'm here tonight advocating for two things on the, uh, the special needs playground. Um, now that COVID is pretty much, uh, not as as emerging as it has been in the last couple of years. I was wondering if we can actually have the ribbon cutting ceremony, um, for the special needs park. Um, I, I think what's happened in the rect department is doing it outstanding job is trying to get it out to the community and the community to make it uh, take part in it. But I, I just don't know if, if we, if we're doing a good job of, of marketing the gem that we have over, uh, at O'Connell Park, which is the inclusive, uh, playground. The second thing I have is, I, I know it's budget season and we talked about this last year. Um, I'm advocating again tonight for funds for to install a fence around the inclusive park. What we learned while the park was being designed from the special needs community is that children who are on the spectrum at times tend to just take off and run. And since there isn't any fence around the playground, uh, currently, um, I spoke to Mayor Precious at the time and I, and I spoke before the council about maybe setting some capital funds or, um, installing, uh, a fence around that so that the families who are using the park uh, could actually, um, sit down and relax and, and, and not have to worry about the kids just ta- just take, taken off. The special needs community at the time of the design was willing to try and raise the money for the fence, um, but, um, I put that on hold because, you know, Mayor Precious and I talked and the council, uh, and the rect department. I'd say, listen, maybe there's probably some money left aside that we could probably come up with from the capital. So I'm here again tonight advocating, um, as budget season, if we can set some money aside. If not, um, I would then actually go out and start raising the money for the fence because I think it's a important part of the park and for the families to enjoy. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Charles.
Uh, Council President, that concludes the, uh, members of the Zoom audience with their hand raised for public comment. We have fifty-five attendees in the audience.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan, for that update and information. Public comment is now officially closed. However, I was in receipt of a communication presented to me by Madam Clerk, um, that was asked to be read into the record from Integrity House, Robert J. Budsock, uh, West Orange Township Council, sixty-six Main Street, West Orange, New Jersey. To the honorable members of the West Orange Town Council, I am writing this letter to support Richard Trink as a township attorney for West Orange. In my capacity of president and CEO of Integrity House, I have worked directly with Richard for several decades. Several years ago, Richard spearheaded the Operation Hope Initiative along with Chief Jim Abbott and Integrity House. This project, which was implemented as a result of Richard's steadfast leadership and brilliant legal mind, was the first of its kind in New Jersey. Under Richard Trink's leadership, the project became a model for many towns and cities throughout New Jersey. I know Richard to be a person who can navigate challenging situations, provide sound legal guidance and build communities, as he has done in West Orange. Please accept my strong support of Richard Trink as the West Orange Township Attorney. Sincerely, Robert J. Budsock, President and CEO, Integrity House. Thank you. Yes. Okay, so just for informational, and just for information, we don't vote. We just close it. But yes, um, please come forward. And if you'll just give us your name and address for the record.
First of all, thank you. My name is Mo Patel, thirty-three Ashford. I'm here out of disappointment with some of the members of this council. You fired our public advocate. Our public advocate. Why did you? Why? Did you do your homework before you did that? Did you attend any of the meetings? Did you interview him? From what you stated last time, no. It was just a couple of emails made your decision. You weren't elected to just make random decisions. You're elected to be the voice of the people, not stifle their voice. From where, from what I see here, um, Councilwoman Asmart, you said at the last meeting, you regretted your no vote. You didn't do your homework. You didn't do your homework. Um, well, if this is how the council is going to conduct the people's business, it's, it's a shame that you're doing that. You're stifling the people's voice again. To what I've heard tonight about Mr. Mr. Trent via Zoom on my way here, again, why seems to be politics. That's what I think it is. It's all politics. The people did not elect you to do politics on their voice. They elected you to do the right thing for them, to make the right decisions for them, be the, be the public advocate. And you're gonna get rid of the public advocate for your own personal, whatever agenda it is, that's wrong. And I just wanted to make that clear that he should not be fired. You did the wrong thing. The people will go and vote when it comes time and they will do the right thing at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. And seeing no further, uh, ask to participate in public comment, now public comment is officially closed.
Council President, we did have one individual raise their hand, um, before.
I, I, I'll ask that they please email the council. We've already given a courtesy to someone who just came in and public comment was closed.
The individual who has their, uh, hand raised, uh, public comment is closed. I cannot grant you permission to talk. Please send the, uh, town council a email. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, just moving forward, just for the record, if you are on the Zoom call, um, please do not wait in line, uh, till you see no hands raised. Please raise your hands immediately when public comment is asked for those on the Zoom, um, audience. That way you are automatically put in a queue and we know that you are waiting to have an opportunity to speak. So thank you. And again, we apologize, but we do have to maintain some rules and order. I will, um, again, with responses to public comment, as always, thank you so much for everyone's, um, support and participation. Um, this is what civic engagement, um, community activism looks like. We had a packed house, um, earlier when we started our conference agenda with our awards and our accolades. Um, just making sure our community is always celebrated. Thank you for those who came out to participate in that. And then, of course, as we, uh, segue into our conference agenda, um, thank you to those who took an opportunity this evening to come out and voice your concerns. Uh, let us be aware of those things that are important to you. Again, this is the best case, um, that we can hope for as civil discourse and exchange occurs and we appreciate everyone. Um, thank you as always to our public information officer for bringing us information on what's coming up in West Orange. And thank you so much for sharing the information on, on Mr. Puglisi's behalf as in his absence. So I'm going to try to go as quickly, um, through my responses as I possibly can, as we have listened to public comment this evening. And a time that I would say is probably the longest, um, public commentary that we've had under my tenure as council president. So with that, um, we had a tremendous amount of support uh, for our township attorney, Mr. Trink. Thank you all for coming out and voicing your concerns. Certainly what I always keep in mind, and I thank our former mayor for giving me perspective, is that one thing that we have to always be conscious of is that when we hear um, voices at the council meeting, we still have to take into consideration um, that we still have forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine thousand other residents. And while they may not have had an opportunity to speak out against, um, whatever the topic or occasion is, um, we do know that when you're unhappy with something, your voice is certainly heard. I have to also take into consideration that when you are not complaining, your voice is still heard. Um, doesn't necessarily mean silence is your consent. Um, but certainly what we do know is when people are unhappy, they certainly will come and makes their voices heard. We had, um, conversation again about the Israel flag raising. Um, I think what is important is that we put on public record that as a municipality, we are moving forward with the Israel flag raising. That we are trying to not allow international politics to enter into our local residents that live here. And so with that, um, unfortunately, for those who are frustrated or advocate for us to pivot and not support the Israel flag raising, uh, this administration and the members of this council have made very clear that we want to support those residents who live here in West Orange, um, with this occasion. We may not always agree, but we must be respectful and agree to disagree. There's never gonna be a complete, um, agreement between us and everything that is done in this community. But we must be and always remain respectful. Um, as we continue to go through, I wanted to just acknowledge Nicole Ruffo. Um, I also lived in the Gregory area, um, served as, um, um, PTA president, um, for several years when I, my children did attend Gregory. Um, those concerns, safety concerns, um, that are still ongoing today have not been something of new. Um, my, my son is twenty-five years old. My daughter is nineteen. So again, that fight is a fight that has been ongoing. And I am very, very pleased to see that there is movement and resolution in making our pedestrian walk to school much safer. Um, I do recall doing actual, um, school days when we all just made an conscious effort to walk to school um, so that we could show, um, that it is a concern for our children and their safety. Mr. Brick, I want to thank you for your comments, um, certainly, um, reminding us of the uh, ninth commandment, um, is something that we should not have to be reminded of. Um, but we do thank you, um, for your advocacy, your service to this community and your diligence. Sometimes it is necessary to be reminded, um, that we all do have to work hard to be kind to each other and to get along. Mr. Scott, um, we have not publicly, uh, made a decision, but thank you, um, for at least yielding to the zoning board attorney and her governance and being respectful in the decision that has been made. For all of those who came forward to got, talk about Mr. Thapar and the support, um, for his contract, certainly diversity is a consideration when we look at the hiring practices in West Orange. I'm very happy and excited to see our new financial team member, um, is a diverse candidate. Whether it was intentional, um, or whether or not it was just the best qualified candidate, which is certainly, uh, what we should be looking for. Um, diversity does matter. And it does look to me, um, that we are sitting around this table, a diverse representation of this community. And with our hiring practices, we are being intentional about making sure we hire diverse candidates. But I don't want us to get confused, uh, that diversity should ever supersede excellence. Excellence should always be the priority when we're looking to add anyone, uh, to this administration, to this employment opportunity. Excellence comes first and I'm certain that our administration is doing both, um, in hiring excellent, diverse candidates. Corey Dishman, thank you very much for always continuing to come out and support West Orange. Um, to Mr. Dishman as well as all of our additional cannabis candidates. And we look forward to you all doing business, um, in West Orange. And while I have not seen, um, as was asked, a analysis of the projected income, um, that the cannabis is in businesses can infuse into West Orange, I would be, um, willing to affirm that that's because we really don't understand how many cannabis cannabis businesses will be opened. Um, so I don't think it would be wise to do a projection when the information is such a variable. We do know based on other entities that are open in our neighboring towns, that it is a lucrative, uh, influx of cash to the municipal, um, resources that we have. And we'll definitely do, um, a much needed adjustment to our taxes. Ms. Levkowitz, uh, you asked why the cannabis ordinance was not on the agenda. Um, the cannabis ordinance does require review and three votes for any amendments to be made. Um, that is how we function because we are a body of five. Um, there was not sufficient time. Uh, the cannabis ordinance that was created, uh, by our councilwoman Scarpa was sent to this body on Tuesday. Um, all of my council colleagues did not have an opportunity to review it. Um, and so therefore, we discussed having an opportunity for everyone to have input. Um, so that we get to this table with the understanding of what we want it to be. Um, I've also advised that we can certainly have another special meeting if we decide to try and hash through, um, the cannabis ordinance in a public forum, um, so that everyone is clear and it is a transparent process. As far as the West Exodus Highlands are concerned, um, many people are indeed concerned with the development. Um, but as our mayor indicated, um, that is not an application before, um, this municipal body as yet. Um, certainly, when there are, um, state approvals needed, some developers, uh, do select to do both the municipal application as well as the state application simultaneously. However, that did not occur in this case. And so the application is with the D E P seeking approval. And I understand, um, certainly if those approvals are received, that the next step would be for the planning board or zoning board in West Orange to th- then hear that application. planning board or zoning board in West Orange to th- then hear that application. Certainly, I hope that you continue to advocate, stay in tune, and watch for the agenda of either of those boards. That would be your initial point of advocacy um, to come in and support or non-support of any changes and make your voice heard. While we do appreciate um, your concerns, again, it's not an application at this time that we can deal with, but will be forthcoming. Mel Valdez, I wanted to thank you um, again for your advocacy and attentiveness to your neighborhood. Um, you gave us a tremendous amount of observances. I'm just gonna ask that on behalf of the administration and the council um, that you put those concerns in writing and send them to the administration. I did hear that some of the um, information that you were requesting, that you had submitted a written report. But as far as Elm Street, Colgate Park, um, certainly, the administration can speak to when those upgrades um, are slated or scheduled, if any upgrades are in the works under capital improvement. So I will give them an opportunity to respond to that specifically. As far as crosswalks on Franklin and the immediate area, you asked about them being repainted. Um, certainly, we will allow our municipal engineer and the administration, if that has already been identified um, to speak to that information as well. Garbage cans on Franklin, um, you asked about their replacement, and again, that's an administrative response. Uh, Mr. Gaynor, thank you so much um, for your service of twenty-six years to the West Orange Fire Department. Um, I understand and I have learned um, so much in listening to uh, commentary. However, um, what we do know is sometimes um, information is not clear. Um, sentiments and emotions run high, and so again, this body does not have the information as far as the council is concerned. And if the administration or Mr. Gross chooses to respond publicly, um, then I will yield to them for them to do so. We again have touched on the orange tree markings. Um, I personally took the time um, last week since this concern um, was presented to us, and I responded to every email about the orange markings. I consulted with our administration, with our municipal engineer, as well as with our zoning official to understand this is a preliminary process. Um, there is a rationale for the trees to be marked. However, this is a multi-step process, and it doesn't automatically mean that if the tree was marked, um, that it would be removed. What I also understand is that um, it is difficult um, to do the bump outs according to the plans for the construction that we have slated. Um, certainly, um, creative opportunities can be done, but I do want to remind the public that when we do these capital improvements, um, the budget amount is typically done maybe a year or even two years in advance before the work commences. Um, so unfortunately, I'm not aware of any um, options that uh, might be available to do any bump outs or any change in what has already been approved. But again, the administration can correct me if I'm wrong. Thank you, Mr. Malanga, um, and Ms. Rudin, um, for your advocacy and um, I also wanted to just point out my own personal experience with a tree this week in a property for sale. Um, the sewer line um, was corrupted, and in order to replace the sewer line, an extremely mature tree on Glen Side Drive um, was going to be put at risk. And so unfortunately, um, there is always not a clear response or answer to saving a tree to the visual eye. I would have never imagined that such a beautiful, healthy tree had to come down. Um, but I'm certain the homeowners were concerned about why their sewer spillage kept coming back into their home. Um, once it had been cleaned properly, um, tree roots had damaged the sewer line, and the only way to replace that sewer line was to take down that beautiful, mature tree. Um, so there's always an explanation um, that that may not be visible to the um, regular citizen or to the naked eye about the health of a tree or the construction of West Orange. I just wish that we could amicably agree um, that when we are doing what is needed to move West Orange forward um, to do these constructions, um, that there is an underlying a- agenda and objective for us to preserve the trees. I'm not certain when the narrative changed that West Orange doesn't want to be a tree city. Um, certainly, we understand, all of us do, the benefits of trees, um, the benefits of our, and the impact that it has on our environment. But to make the assumption that this administration and these elected officials are not interested in preserving and protecting our environment is just simply false. Mr. Charles, thank you for your advocacy. Um, I agree. I would love to see a ribbon-cutting ceremony at uh, O'Connor Park. And certainly, I do know without any hesitation um, that if we cannot find the money in the municipal budget to, to include that fencing, um, based on your history of service in West Orange, I know that if you say you will raise the money, um, that you will indeed do that. So I want to thank you for your continued advocacy, awareness, and protection to um, a community that is not always um, given the most attention and the highest priority. So given this is um, Autism Awareness Month, we just want to thank everyone for coming today and for bringing this to our attention. Again, there is always some type of um, sentiment that there is an agenda and objective for, to be exclusionary or to not be inclusive. And what we observed here today was someone who, from the public, um, felt that they were not included and uh, given an opportunity to be um, a part of something monumental that we did for the first time here in West Orange. And then at the end, um, instead of it being an opportunity where um, there was contention, we saw that the differing parties embraced and, and agreed that we should work together and advocate together because the more hands make less work. And so I just want to encourage and remind our residents, you know, to not always be so accusatory. Um, we're here to help, serve, protect, and make West Orange the best she can be. Um, I don't think any of us do this for the money because there isn't much that we get paid. We do this because we love this community. Um, we often sit here and get bashed by you and accused by you of not doing our jobs and not caring. Well, I can tell you right now, in, in every inch of my body, that if I didn't love this community, I certainly wouldn't be sitting here because it's not for the money. It's because I want to make a difference for my children's children, for your children's children, and for this community as a whole. I live here, I love it here, and I just hope that we can all move forward without being bashing, um, without being disrespectful, and continue to be kind and serve and live this community of West Orange with love first. Thank you. That's all I have. Um, I understand that um, Councilwoman Castellino appreciated that I reversed order a couple of meetings ago. And because we um, would like to continue in that vein, Councilwoman Scarpa, if you'll give us your remarks.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, thank you to everyone who came out tonight. Um, it is really wonderful to see such a diverse community who really does have a vision of working together. Um, we often disagree, but as Councilwoman, we all agree and Councilmen that we need to work together and solve problems, and there are a lot to solve. I want to first start, uh, Bob Davis, I wanted to thank him for coming out and from the mental health organization. I had an interesting experience with um, one of the the young men last summer that he was speaking of. I was in my garden, doing my gardening, and a man in his twenties ran through my yard, in my back door, up the stairs of my home. And at the time, all I saw was a male. I didn't know who it was. And I ran, I called the police. West Orange Police responded within minutes. They were incredible, the way they handled the situation. It turned out, I'm a speech pathologist in the schools, and I have some experience with cognitively impaired people. So when I realized as he came down the stairs that he was impaired, I handled it with the police accordingly. And he was barefoot, running down the street. I was worried he was going to get hit by a car. And our police chief Abbott, they just handled it so beautifully. You would have thought they were social workers. And they were very in tune to this community, and I just can't tell you how appreciative I am. Um, but we have a wonderful police department. Uh, also, I wanted to um, thank everyone who came out to talk about our special needs community, uh, Rocha Jones, our new member from Rock Spring. Uh, you may not know, I am a speech-language pathologist in our schools. I've been a recipient of two pass awards. I am known for going above and beyond and fiercely advocating for our special needs children, and I hope to be a resource for you in our schools. Um, you may not, you asked what programs we have, and you may not know that our police department has a wonderful Take Me Home program, and that is a program that might assist you with um, your children. Uh, Nicole Ruffo, I live on the curve on Gregory Avenue. Thank you for your advocacy. I've watched numerous accidents there over my lifetime in this township. And we really do need to make our streets safer on Gregory and slow down the speed. And uh, my son Alexander was very good friends with Akil Benlani and knew of his advocacy. We're safe streets as well. They worked together in some of those efforts. And I've worked with the Benlani Association and also Roz Moskowitz on pedestrian safety. So thank you for all of your advocacy. Mike Brick, thank you so much for all you do to protect our environment and our trees. Thank you for your kind words. You know that I am here to assist you in every way, shape, and form on all of our environmental concerns. And I do want to say that I appreciate your kind words about Mr. Kip because I'm just getting to know him on the Environmental Committee, and I am so impressed with his education, with his knowledge, with his commitment to working with our community, and his commitment to working with me. It was last Friday when I came out, uh, when I was called out uh, with a, by a number of people who had concerns about our trees. I met with Joyce Rudin and Jill. Jill, thank you for calling in. I enjoyed meeting you. It was so nice to meet you, and I can assure you, I will be working with you and all of our residents to do whatever we can to protect the trees in our township. I have asked our engineering department for some information so we can look very strategically at the plan, at what's being done and how it's being done, and maybe think outside of the box so that we can protect more trees than have been protected in the past by doing some of those carve-outs around the sidewalks, maybe some different types of improvements to our streets. There, I've been researching this with other councils in other townships, and there are some things we can do. They're not always the easiest, and they're not always the cheapest, but I hope that we can look at this very strategically. Because sometimes when you invest a little bit more money and take a slow and methodical approach, we save money down the road, and I know that we're all working to that end, and thank you. Um, Brent Scott, thank you again for coming out, and thank you for giving us the facts and the history. I always appreciate all of your um, all of your well-thought-out and well-educated comments. Harry, thank you for coming out. I agree, we need to respect everyone's opinions in our township. We need to celebrate our diversity, and to those who came out also um, in terms of the Israeli flag raising, I think our council president said it well. But as we've said, hate has no home here in West Orange. We love and appreciate and celebrate every one of our residents of every diverse background. And as we can see with our special ed population, when there's an opportunity to raise a flag and celebrate people, we do that, and we want to do that for each and every one of our represented cultures and ethnic groups. Um, Rachel Klein, again, thank you for coming out and talking about some of the problems in the West Essex Highlands. Um, I have gotten a lot of calls from residents who have experienced flooding there. I've also gotten calls from a couple of residents complaining about the sewer problems and the smells that they were experiencing just last week. It's a very, very difficult problem, and we do need to keep our eyes on it. Um, I had asked uh, Mr. Trank for the settlement agreement, and he was kind enough to send it over to me. And I think that as a township, we need to really look at that and review it, and when the developer does decide to develop that property, we need to make sure we hold them accountable for all of the of the comments, all of the agreements that they made, so that we can protect our environment, and I'm sure you will do that. Um, Pastor Adams, thank you for calling in again. Uh, we appreciate all you do for our special needs community and all of your advocacy for our township. John Blanton, uh, thank you so much for calling as well. I agree, diversity, equity, inclusion is what we are all about here. I am sure that our HRC is planning Juneteenth celebration, and, and we will get to that um, at another time. I appreciate that you let us know that we need to um, adhere to the wishes of all of our constituents because we make a lot of difficult decisions here. And I can assure you, all of the decisions that I have made have had nothing to do with ethnicity. They've had nothing to do with personality. They, I have been here working with Rosary Morelli and a lot of other people in our township for a decade, watching zoning meetings, watching planning board meetings, coming to council meetings, and advocating for so many different um, problems in our town. And I am well-versed. I educate myself. I talk to many, many residents, not just residents of one group or another, before I make decisions. And I feel very confident with all of the decisions that I have made to date. Um, and believe me, people who don't like them, call me. They email me. As you heard, I go to their house and I talk to them, whether they have opinions that are the same or different than mine. I try to put myself in their shoes and look at every situation from everyone's point of view. And I think if we all do that, I've said it many times, if we just put ourselves in the shoes of people whose opinions are different from our own, I think we could all come to better outcomes. Um, Sean, police and fire. Uh, thank you for all you've done for, as a firefighter for our township. Thank you for being a vet. Those are the two professions that are closest, nearest, and dearest to my ha- my heart. As you know, we've had many conversations. I uh, hope that uh, Mr. Gross will address whatever concerns that you've had regarding your retirement benefits, and I don't know if you'd like to do that now.
Well, it's, it's a personal matter in, in terms of that, but in terms, so I'm not going to discuss particulars here tonight. I will say this, um, look, I, I have nothing, nothing but respect and, and, and admiration for him as well as all, all of our staff and that, that, that served the township and, and, and managed to, you know, retire from here. Um, and I'm empathetic to his concerns, and I'm happy to discuss it with him directly. Um, if, if he likes, I, I'm not going to discuss his personal matters in, in public.
Okay, so he could do that. Okay, uh, but again, thank you for your service. Mel Valdez, thank you so much for your advocacy for the Washington area. You know, as a speech-language pathologist at that school, I feel strongly that that part of town, and particularly my children there, do not always um, get the attention that they deserve. Uh, the crosswalks are critical. Uh, Colgate Park may need to be upgraded a bit, and um, I think what I'll do is uh, refer you to the Recreation Department for whatever upgrades may be done to the park unless the mayor has any, anything to add on that. But I'm not aware at this point of what's planned for Colgate Park, but we could certainly find out and get back to you, or you could call our Recreation Department. But we could certainly find out and get back to you, or you could call our recreation department um, directly. For after thirty years, we have someone there who's really in charge and will be able to answer all your questions. Thank you for your service, Mr. Kio. Um, Zazabat, again, thank you for your advocacy of all the trees. I completely agree with you. And um, Ms. Rudin, we really need to take a very strategic look at what we're doing with respect to tree removal. And in terms of your three questions, I think again, this is a question for Mr. Gross. Um, one, I know you asked about the cost to remove the trees. That's important information. Two, you asked about the bidding for the tree removal, another good question. And also who has been awarded the contract. So those are questions that I don't know right now. Perhaps Mr. Gross can talk to us.
Well, uh, uh, we, we'll have to look at the specifics of it. But we do bid out um, for our contractors for most of our trees. And emergencies are a different circumstance, obviously. Uh, but any, anything that we, if we spend over forty-four thousand dollars a year, it must, must be bid out or done through, through, through a state contract. I, I, the other thing I, I just want to mention while we're talking about this is, is that, you know, eh, I, I think unfortunately, and, and, and tonight, maybe we can go a long way to try to straighten this out with most of our public. When we go out to mark the trees, we're not marking them to take them down. We're talk, we're marking them to figure out how to make sure we save them. And you know, the, while, while we may have uh, marked eighty-three trees on these particular projects, eighty-three trees are nowhere near that number i- is, is, is would be even considered. It's a matter of trying to figure out what the condition of those trees are, what, what the impact that the project is on the trees and what the impact of the trees are on the project. So we mark, we go and mark because we send uh, people out to, to evaluate. And, and so it's, it's part of the process. It's not a, it's, 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 it's not a X marks the spot or we're coming after your tree. It's, we're, we're looking to, to, within this project, to identify the trees that are at risk and figure out what we can do to save the, and make sure that we protect as many of them as possible. We're extremely sensitive to this issue. Um, and I know that, that there's members of the public that, that, that they're skeptical to that. And, and I do also know that there's members of the public that do appreciate what we do. And, and frankly, we get advocated by residents um, who, who will advise us uh, conditions of the trees and, and the experiences that they have. So you know, we, we work, going back to what we talked about before, um, there is no one in this organization that is working against the residents or against the, the, the desires of the residents. And uh, and we're all working for the same thing. And, and we, we're, we take this very serious. Um, and, and we're, we're working on scoping out exactly what we can do, you know, what you, you talked about what, you, you did some research for other towns and I can tell you that, that we do that too. And, and we do the research and not only that, we, we, we use the methodologies to try to save, but sometimes trees in bad shape and there's nothing we can do about. Sometimes tree is growing into the roadway. And, and so we either have to make a decision about whether we're going to fix the roadway or, or, and what, what impact is on that tree. So does that mean that sometimes people are disappointed? It does happen. And that's unfortunate. But, but it's, it's not because we're being insensitive to the issue or insensitive to them. Uh, we're, we're very sensitive to it. So um, we look forward to dealing with these, these, these two projects and projects in the future.
Okay, great. And to Kevin Mulanga, thank you again for your advocacy for our township. Not only um, with your environmental concerns, but also with your um, respect for the taxpayers and uh, with respect to all of your advocacy for limiting some of these areas in need of redevelopment, which I believe as, as you do um, do create tax burdens too often for our residents. So I can't thank you enough for all you do. Um, Seth Wesler, um, I do agree with you. I think we should be meeting the residents of on Howell Drive. As I said, I did get the settlement agreement to review it and to see what we can do for Mr. Trank. And I do believe we need to manage this development uh, very carefully as we move forward. And perhaps the residents up in that neighborhood can be good partners with us in doing that. Um, so uh, we do want to make sure that the least amount of damage to our environment um, is incurred as that developer moves forward. And uh, to Mrs. Lefkowitz, um, thank you again for all your advocacy on candidate, on cannabis. It, I totally agree with you. It is necessary to move forward with this cannabis ordinance for the benefit of the public and the cannabis business entities themselves. They can't move forward with their business plans without the guidance that our ordinance will provide. And as such, I revised the ordinance with support. And it was emailed to all of the council members and the legal department on Tuesday, April eleventh. I did speak to our council president the next day. She suggested she needed time to review it. I believe a week is sufficient. Therefore, I was surprised when Karen Cornivalle informed me that it could not be put on the agenda because she hadn't gotten it back from legal. So I would like to resolve whatever misunderstandings have occurred since the changes were minor, many previously agreed upon and very reasonable. And it was explained to me that the council president needs to put it on the agenda. So perhaps I, uh, I guess I'll request that it be put on the agenda for our next meeting. And I would like to request legal to look at it and advise and facilitate the necessary discussion to ensure that the ordinance is put on. And I would like to clarify the next steps and be formed, informed in writing as to what that procedure actually is to make sure it happens. Uh, I believe this cannabis debacle is a matter of leadership. Leadership is about making tough decisions and tough choices. And the lack of leadership that's taken place around the introduction of the cannabis business in our township is disappointing and unfair to the residents of our community who believe their voices are being silenced. And by failure to properly educate our community through town hall meetings and the board of education. Our failure to educate and inform the public of our plans to promote cannabis in our community has exacerbated confusion and unrest. The stonewalling must stop. Parents who want to protect their children need to be given a real forum to voice their concerns. And they will continue to speak out through various petitions that are circulating and with their vote. Those in leadership positions in our community need to have the courage to be honest with our parents, make the tough choices and clearly state their position on this matter. I am willing to protect our children and stand with parents even when it's not a popular decision and they're, not everyone agrees with me. As I said before, I've taken no money from anyone. I'm here to do what's right for my constituents and not to worry about electability. So we all need to do, uh, all of our, my council colleagues, I'd like to say, I'd like us to do what is right and not what is politically expedient in this regard.
And that's good. Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, if I may just interject, there was a question about Juneteenth and how we would be celebrating Juneteenth. I apologize, Mr. Blanton, uh, for overlooking the response to that. Um, but I do want to update uh, you and in particular because you asked the question as well as our residents. Um, we did host a preliminary meeting um, for our Juneteenth Planning Committee. Um, that was commenced last week. We are working with our community organizations um, to put together a series of events uh, for Juneteenth. Juneteenth, as you know, is Saturday, uh, June nineteenth as well as um, the seventeenth. June seventeenth, I'm sorry, um, Saturday, June seventeenth. And we're looking to have activities on Friday, June sixteenth in partnership with the schools. And then um, for a flag raising on the seventeenth, um, which is a Saturday in conjunction with some of our other uh, departments as well. So please stay tuned for more information and finalized plans surrounding our Juneteenth celebration. We have been celebrating Juneteenth since June of twenty twenty. Um, and we will definitely continue to celebrate um, that holiday. Thank you. Councilman Rutherford.
Uh, thank you, Council President. Uh, so to begin, um, I'm not just disappointed, I'm certainly disappointed, but I'm also disturbed at the tone that uh, continues to be taken in this chamber. Um, I will address these individual comments, but I, I think um, the way we speak to each other when we disagree is deteriorating. I think it's eroding the public trust. I think it is uh, entrenching people in their political tribes. And I think it is stifling um, some voices that would participate if the tone was not so negative. Um, we began with a presentation by our mayor. And uh, it's very disappointing to have someone use that moment to criticize when the proclamation is being provided and the hand is extended and the apology was already extended. Um, you know, we've got to do better. Now, we can do better. But we all have to do better in how we speak to each other, especially when we disagree, especially in public. Um, what happens behind closed doors, nobody knows. But everything that is in this chamber on Tuesday nights, when we have a council meeting, is recorded and broadcast and permanently um, archived for people to watch. And, and I am disappointed with how we conduct our business with each other. We call ourselves neighbors. We say we're a stigma free town. We try to support marginalized groups, but when we disagree, we have to make the other person the villain. And that has to stop if we're going to move forward as one town. So I want to encourage all of us, and by that I don't just mean the council, I mean all of us, West Orange, uh, to show a little bit more grace to each other when we disagree. Um, now specifically with regard to the public commenters, as always, I thank everyone for participating and raising your voice. That's exactly what that moment is meant for. Uh, Mr. Fagan, as always, I do appreciate your timely uh, updates. Um, and uh, I appreciate you standing in for Mr. Polisi tonight as well. Um, a gentleman, I, I did not get his last name. His first name was Yoshi. Uh, spoke again about the Israeli flag raising. Uh, so I find it, I find it interesting, a, a couple of observations. Number one, for literally everyone that has spoken in opposition to the flag raising, um, this is how I take it and I could be wrong, but it, it appears to me you are speaking at us and not with us. If your goal is to change someone's mind, speaking at them is not the way. And, and the reason I say you speak at us is because literally every single commenter on that issue made their comment and left. They did not wait for our response. There have been times people have waited outside of uh, town hall after council meetings to have private conversations with council people and other folks. People have called, people have emailed, texted, to have conversations about issues that are important to them. And everyone on that issue has failed to follow that type of approach. I think that approach would do you far greater good uh, than just speaking at us. Now, as the council president said, we are not going to interject international politics into our local politics. Um, and I do believe what we're doing is celebrating people. We're not, we're not highlighting Benjamin Netanyahu, his position. We're not making a statement about any of his politics or any of the other parties. There's nothing in what we're doing that advocates one way or the other. What we are doing is highlighting that community in this township. And, and we should, and we should do it for every community. Um, and so again, if, if your goal is to get us to, to, to not raise the Israeli flag and have a ceremony, you're not likely to, you're not going to sway me. Now, what we can do is talk about creating spaces to discuss the real issue. We talked about that at the last council meeting. We can do a Palestinian flag raising. We can do many other things that are creative and productive and positive, but we are not going to um, let um, that negative energy, uh, well, I'm not going to let that negative energy influence me uh, on an issue like this. Uh, I think the best way to solve those kinds of differences is to have conversation. Uh, Mr. Davidson, I appreciate you, your uh, uh, being complimentary of us. And I uh, understand your support for Mr. Trink as well as all of you that have come out tonight to support Mr. Trink. I, I am disappointed by that though. You know, what part of what we have as a body been dealing with is a lack of legal counsel to the town council. As stated multiple times by public commenters tonight, stated by our mayor and others, um, including Mr. Trink himself, you know, Mr. Gross as well. Administration wants something done. They give it to Mr. Trink and he gets it done. Um, in our form of government, the town council deserves legal representation as well. And when we don't have confidence in the legal advice we get from our attorneys because it appears that that advice is given from a particular perspective, we are now left without the ability to do our jobs the way it was intended by the Faulkner Act. The town attorney works not just for the mayor or at the pleasure of the mayor. The town attorney has to be responsible to the responsive to the town council as well. And this town council on a particular issue, it was brought up tonight, has, and, and prior town councils have been united in asking our legal department to take a certain course of action over. We're now in our third year with that particular course of action. And that particular course of action has been ignored at every turn. Even when all five of us, and we rarely, all five, this council or the other, agree on something. I mean, the regular normal course of business we agree on, there's just normal governance that has to take place. But with regard to specific issues and what we do and where we do it, it's very difficult to get five people who come from different perspectives, backgrounds, experiences, education to agree on all of those things. And we have agreed and we have asked and we have not been treated with the same courtesy and respect as, as our mayor. And that is a problem for those folks that have elected us. Um, and so while I understand, I'm not saying he didn't do a good job. Maybe he did. I don't know all of those issues that were raised. Uh, but we have a hundred thousand law students graduating every single year in this country. We have in Jersey and in Essex County, North Jersey, more than our fair share of attorneys. He is not the only one that can do the job. His presence for twenty-five years I think speaks volumes. Cause I don't think you can find another township in New Jersey that has had the same town attorney over three different administrations in twenty-five years. And there's a reason for that. Every single mayor and town council is uniquely comprised. They have their own vision, their own desires about what they want to accomplish. They have their own constituents that they have to be responsive to and advocate for issues for. And those things are not going to be handled the same way over twenty-five years. They're just not. Um, now, there was some specific comments made. Um, one was to the effect that he doesn't do it for the money. You know, this is now the third year that I've asked for legal fees. We just got them recently. In the original time we got them, we didn't even get them from the administration. We got them as a result of someone who provided it for us. Um, but the amount of legal fees that we pay, we still don't know. We can get an estimate from Mr. Gross, but we've not gotten by firm the amount of legal fees that West Orange has paid. And we've asked for that. So how do we do our job? How do we make a proper assessment, analysis of whether or not this is working for us? If we can't get the basic information and when it comes at the last minute, when every, now that everybody's hair is on fire, to me, that's just too late. It could have come last year, could have come the year before, could have come in January or February or March. But now that the contract is up, we magically, we get it. And that's just one issue. I'm grateful that there was some clarity provided around the Supreme Court decision that we recently received regarding designating the library as an area in need of redevelopment. And I, you know, I think our, I think our legal system, as flawed as it is, I think the structure where the lower courts have their decisions reviewed by higher courts. I think the ability to appeal all the way up to a Supreme Court, where the Supreme Court then makes the final ruling. And it is not challenged, at least the only challenge to our state Supreme Court would be the United States Supreme Court, as I understand it. I think that's the right system. And so it doesn't matter how many times you win in lower court. If you continue to go up the chain and get to the Supreme Court and the Supreme Court decides differently. That is the way our system has been set up. That's something that we've all supported, I believe, going along the way. And, and I think it deserves our support and trust and confidence. Now, one more thing on trust and confidence. You know, it's, there are some times that we are, as council people, asked to take things at face value. And if we don't trust the one that is telling us that, we can't do that. The same is true for the public. If the public is asked to trust what we say, they have to actually trust that we're going to give them the full story. And so when along the way we don't, it erodes a little bit of trust every single time. And then when we need it, as in tonight with regard to the tree ordinance. Mr. Gross, I appreciate your perspective that everyone here wants to save the trees. I understand exactly what you mean when you say that. I also understand the residents are going to have a hard time accepting that because they've seen trees be cut down with little or nothing done, or at least communicated to them what was done about it. And then we know climate change is real. And so, you know, we've got to have more, we've got to have a better way of communicating around these things that has integrity, that does not violate the public trust or eroded. Because these things are, they're important things, but you know, more important and bigger things, emergencies are going to come down the road and we're going to need people to trust us. And at that point, if that trust is not there, it's going to be very difficult to get the public to support us when we take some difficult, when we make some difficult decisions. One more thing on the trees. With council president spoke about the bump outs to, to save the tree for the sidewalks. I, I, I echo the sentiments of my colleagues, Councilwoman Scarpa. It may not be the cheapest way to do it from a dollars and cents standpoint. But it is the right way to do it if we're serious about preserving our canopy, maintaining our small town feel and mitigating the effects of climate change. One of my favorite places to visit is Charleston, South Carolina. And they flood frequently. And because they flood, they are serious about taking down mature trees and they do almost everything they can to preserve that tree, even paving the road without a bump out, without the concrete on the sidewalk, without the Belgium block, just paving the road around the tree. And yes, the roots will continue to grow and raise it up and they will pave it right back over because that tree does more, does more good for them than the pain of paying or the inconvenience of actually paving around it causes them. It's a cost benefit analysis. And I think we should do all of that. That's how we maintain. You know, people have been talking about being here for 50 years. We're celebrating Mr. Keo here for 30 years and, and other folks have been here 25 years or 30 years. When you moved here, a part of the attraction 20 years ago, 30, 40, 50 years ago, was the small town field. There were trees everywhere. If, if we don't maintain that, we're going to have a different type of community in which we live. So I, I agree, we have to do everything we can to maintain these trees, even when it is not the most cost effective option. I want to thank Ms. Jones, new resident, for your advocacy tonight. I, I want to thank all of those from the special needs community that came out tonight, virtually and in person. I think, you know, as a parent of a child who had an IEP for her entire public education career, and she has benefited tremendously from the West Orange Public School System, and I brag about her all the time, received a scholarship to college. Is on the dean's list. I think it's important that we continue to work in that regard. And I, I wanted to say this about it. I think the switch from autism awareness to autism acceptance, you know, words are powerful and I think those words actually do matter. We're aware that there are differently abled, in our mayor's language, residents in our community. What we need to do is find ways to accept and integrate them fully into our community. All right. Got a little emotional there thinking about my big girl. All right. One last thought on this flag raising. It is, to me, not a political statement to support the flag raising. I'm happy to have a conversation about that. 973-979-4973, call me, that's the best way to get me. I don't think it's a political statement. Again, if you're going to have a township of 50,000 people, which is, as far as I know, one of the most diverse towns in the country, in order to maintain that fabric of community, we have to extend our hand to the individual communities in town. And so this is not a political statement. This is a neighborly statement, as far as I see it. Thank you, Mr. Brick, for giving us the heads up about the new tree ordinance. I don't know Mr. Kidd well. I don't know Mr. Kidd at all. And so I, I appreciate that he has some support. But from what I hear, at least so far, he's been responsive and I'm looking forward to working with him to protect more trees. Mr. Scott, thank you for continuing to press your, the issue about the zoning board. You know, I find it interesting how the council can take a position, vote on it. It's in proper order. And, and I'm beginning with the 2016 ordinance. It was done properly. It was at, it was, it went through the proper channels. It became an ordinance or whatever it was. And then a new one is presented because the old one apparently was not satisfactory. And so in the presenting of the new one, because the old one had not been adhered to, we vote that down. And the council, by voting that down, is saying, we don't want that. We don't want these consecutive terms. That is the position, unless that changes tonight or in some future council, that is the position of this council because we legally, properly voted on that. To then have an attorney for a zoning board operate in defiance of that boggles my mind. It absolutely should not stand. And I implore the mayor to reach out to them and let them know their responsibility is to follow what this council said. We have been elected duly by the residents of this town. And they elected us to be their voice. They want us to do their business. And if we make a decision and when we make a decision, that decision should be honored unless there is something wrong with the process, unless we've done something illegal, which we have not, that vote should stand. And the zoning board should immediately, at their very next meeting, have an election for a new chair. Now, specifically with regard to the legality, I checked with attorneys too. I spoke not just with attorneys that are in my circle, but I spoke with the New Jersey League of Municipalities, which is the body that we're supposed to go to with questions like this. And as far as I have been advised, limiting the number of terms a chairperson can serve is perfectly and completely within our purview. What we cannot do is limit the amount of the term. What we cannot do is say that one of my council colleagues appointees can't serve a full four years. We, we, or, or they can't serve multiple terms if they get reappointed by that councilman or councilwoman. We, we are not allowed to limit it in that fashion. But we are perfectly allowed to limit the number of terms someone can serve as chair. And so I expect the zoning board to correct that immediately. You know, I, I'm disappointed that we go along with what the council wants in one instance, and then when we don't like it, we go along with something else. And that is what this seems like to me, and I think that needs to stop. Regarding the public advocate, you know, I, again, this is the, the, the tension in, in these decisions and this debate. So it's, you know, it was said that he was fired. He was not fired. It was said that he was fired without due diligence. He was not fired and he was not fired without due diligence. It was said that some are fighting for the South Asian community, which implies that some are not. And that this firing is against diversity. And I, you know, we've been fighting for diversity. I've, I've been fighting for diversity. I had a, I had a very difficult conversation with our former mayor, which pretty much ended our relationship about seven, eight years ago, dealing with diversity. So to say that, because, because I'm the one, I voted against him as well as some others. Say that I'm not fighting for diversity or somehow not advocating for a particular community, I think is unfair. Now, I, I did not appreciate the tone Mr. Thapar took in admonishing us last week or last council meeting. And what I would have preferred, and by the way, I have attended zoning and planning board meetings. So it's not that I haven't been there. And others have too. We just didn't answer the question publicly at last council meeting. So, you know, I'm disappointed in the tone about that. You know, all right, so I'll, I'll, I'll stop there because it's already late. I want to revisit that. Thank you, Ms. Lefkovitz, for your continued advocacy regarding multiple issues, but certainly tonight with regard to cannabis. You asked some really good questions about what can we do about gas prices being higher here than other places? I don't think there's anything we can do about that. Sorry. Now, if there is, I'm sure the administration will let us know, but I don't think there's anything we can do. And if there is, I'm happy to do it. But there may be something we can do to help seniors acquire their basic necessities. Now, generally speaking, when those kinds of endeavors are taken, it's public-private partnerships. The government does not provide those kinds of services as well or easily as some nonprofits. And so maybe there's a way to be more supportive of some of the groups in town that are meeting that need or able to meet that need or better able to meet that need. And I'm happy to have the conversation with you. I certainly will have that conversation with Councilwoman Scarpa probably tomorrow. Ms. Klein, thank you for staying and thank you for your advocacy as well as Seth Weissletter. We are all concerned about West Essex. And I'm not sure legally how much leverage we have. But I, I, I am aware of the issues that fear cutting trees can cause and the quality of life issues with regard to traffic and noise when you have, you know, high density residential development. And so I, I do think we need to get out in front of it and not wait for them to present to the planning board. I don't know what our strategy is. I will trust that our mayor, who has demonstrated, not just talked about, but demonstrated her commitment to being green. I will trust that she will take these comments tonight into consideration and work with her team to get out in front of what may be coming. And what we as council people can do is interact with you. I'm happy to meet with you and Seth. I know Seth fairly well to understand your concerns better and be in a better position to advocate and empower our mayor to do the type, type of negotiation she needs to do to get a better project. Unfortunately though, I think that horse is out of the barn. Something's going to happen there. You know, I think right now what we can do is try to influence it as much as possible, and that's my commitment to you. All right. I kind of have to go back to this thing. This is not politics with regard to either Mr. Thapar or Mr. Trink. And I'll just leave it there. It's not politics. Mr. Blanton, as always, grateful for your voice. And I share your excitement about the conversation about diversity, equity and inclusion. And, and even in, even when we disagree on some of these issues, I'm just excited, as you are, Mr. Blanton, in that people are bringing them to the forefront. That is what's needed in a town like West Orange, and I think we can lead the country on DEI issues when it comes to, you know, how a community operates and works with each other. And I echo your sentiment on be, on not being disagreeable when we disagree. Now, you asked for some clarity on 112 and 113. Mayor, Mr. Gross, is there any clarity that can be offered? On the, uh, uh, legal contracts that were not renewed?
I would have to defer to Mr. Kizer on that.
Okay, he's here.
Mr. Kizer.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Can you repeat the question, Councilman?
One of the public commentators, Mr. John Blanton, asked for some clarity regarding 112 and 113, the rescission of the legal contracts.
Oh, okay. I, I recall that and I don't understand frankly how there can be any more clarity. They were rescinded. So the, at the end of, that, that's it. I mean, I don't, I don't understand the question.
Well, the way I took it, and I, I could be wrong, but the way I took it is he's, he wants to know what happens now. They've been rescinded, but.
Well, that's a different, that's a different question. And, and as I indicated at the last meeting, I, I, I'm working on that and I haven't finished working on it at this point. But, you know, the, the, as I have explained in an open public meeting, I believe, and I've read the statutory language and also the, the ordinance language, which are consistent, the town attorney serves during the term of the mayor appointing him and until someone new is appointed. So Mr. Trink's not going anywhere. He's still the municipal attorney by virtue of, of the appointment that was made back in January. So there, there is a question about the contract and, and how that's going to get worked out. Um, so there, there is a question about the contract and, and how that's going to get worked out. If it's going to get worked out, we'll have to wait and see, but, um, he doesn't leave because of, because that, that, those resolutions are rescinded. And I, I don't think I can really respond beyond that. So.
Mr. Blanton, I hope that answers your question. It, 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 um, really doesn't mine, but I'm going to, uh, I know you're working on it, Mr. Kaiser. I'm going to wait until, um.
Yeah, the only, the only, the only other thing I want to add, Councilman, is that obviously I'm a lawyer. I have a client. The client is the municipal corporation. Um, I, I don't represent and can't give legal advice to members of the public. Um, in my understanding, and I, as you know, I'm away, but this week, but, um, I, I gather that there was some phone conversation and, and Mr. Blanton referred to it with Mr., between him and Mr. Gross. Um, and it, as it was relayed to me, there was some, you know, there was a question about what the law was and I, I can't advise him with respect to that. So I need to advise the council with respect to that and the mayor with respect to that. And I want to be careful when I do so to make sure that I've done, been thorough in the, in the research that I've done and, and before I do it. So I, I don't know what else to say beyond that.
I think that's satisfactory, Mr. Kaiser. Thank you. Um, Mr. Gainer, uh, again, I do apologize, uh, that you, um, feel this way and have been treated this way. Mr. Gross, I, I gotta circle back to you on this. Um, I know you don't want to discuss a personnel matter in public. However, uh, Mr. Gainer gave a very detailed question, even with dollar amounts and so on and so forth. And he did it publicly and he asked a question publicly and the question was he wants to know why that portion of his pension payment was not paid. And, uh, if you can answer that, we'd like to get an answer to that.
And, and respectfully, I will be happy to have that conversation with Mr. Gainer. Uh, Mr. Gainer's, uh, come in and speaking online does not absolve me of my legal responsibilities to deal with personnel matters in certain ways. And so I, I really can't, um, you know, reflect that to the extent that he certainly has the right to do that. Um, but I have an obligation, a legal obligation to handle things in a certain way, and I can appreciate, um, that. And I, again, I'm, I'm certainly will, more than willing and, and happy to have that discussion directly with him.
All right, I, um, all right. So, uh, please let me know how that turns out.
Sure.
Um, all right. Uh, I agree with, uh, the public commenter Jill. I messed your last name up. I don't want to butcher it, so I do apologize. We do need better communication around tree maintenance, and I think that, uh, comment was well received. Um, thank you, Ms. Rudin, for your comments as well and your questions, and I think they've been addressed. Um, but you know, the public does, does deserve to know the exact price of cutting down these trees. But, um, it's very difficult to get an exact price. Uh, because when the tree is gone, you lose the protection that that tree provides and then you become vulnerable to the issues that that causes. And that impact can't be known now. It's only known when something goes wrong. Um, and so what I would hope is that we would take an approach that, uh, limits that so that we don't have to find out how much it costs us to cut down these mature trees. Uh, Mr. Malanga, thank you for citing the New Jersey Law Journal editorial, uh, regarding that Supreme Court decision. Mr. Thapar, thank you for, uh, raising your voice and thanking your supporters and for not asking them to come. That does speak volumes to me that they came on their own. Uh, and so that was, um, that was received as well. Um, I addressed Mr. Weissletter, Mr. Charles, your comments have already been addressed and I certainly do share your desire to have a ribbon cutting, as well as the fencing. Uh, and I think that's gonna, I think that's going to be it for me. Actually, I'll end where our council president started. We must always be respectful in our disagreement. Uh, that's amongst ourselves. That's with the public. Um, that's with the administration. And I think, um, if we can just find the discipline to do that publicly, even if you have to have a knockdown drag out behind closed doors. I think if we can do that publicly, um, we will grow the trust of the public in their local government. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman.
And I want to thank everyone for coming tonight, for their advocacy, um, for those of you who came in person and for those of you online still with us. Um, so I'm going to keep this brief because we still have a budget presentation. We still have to go into executive session and we still have to discuss the resolutions and there's ordinances as well on the agenda. Um, I want to echo sentiments of my, uh, council colleagues. Regarding the public advocate, I think I made my position, uh, very clear in the last meeting and I had apologized. I had a great conversation, uh, with Sarab. Um, and in fact, asked the administration if they could place it back onto, um, on the agenda and which they said that they would and they did. Um, I have it right here. Uh, it was supposed to be 147, except the administration pulled it and I don't know why. We weren't given a reason other than it was being pulled. So, um, I, I would like to know why it was pulled.
I don't, I, I was not involved in, in, in that, but I can only surmise, um, that, um, and again, I, I was not involved in the whatever conversations there were to put him back on with the administration.
It was in this, say, very same chambers two weeks ago where you guys said that you would actually put it on in the next meeting, which you did, and then you rescinded it. So that I'm a little confused.
I, I, I know there was some conversation about that, about it, what, what, um, I don't, I don't have the answer for you how, how it came off, except that I know that the council did vote it down. And it's not something usually that the, that the administration puts on on its own. To the extent that that conversation occurred, I, I had a conversation with a clerk about that today. And I did not recall the, 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 the specifics of that conversation. So I apologize to you about that.
It was, it was during new business. So if you go back to the video in new business, you guys said that you were going to put it on. And again, which you did, but then removed it. So Sarab, I'm sorry, we can't vote on it today because somehow it was removed.
Well, certainly you have the, it can be, it can be added from.
But I think it's too late for new business because there's no new business after 10.
Well, you haven't done resolutions yet. You still have the opportunity to do it.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Um, and then I am going to reserve my comments, um, until we speak about the resolutions. I think I'm going to keep it brief.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman.
Sure.
Thank you. Still with me. My glasses in the car.
Are they, huh? What do you have?
Oh, 215. Oh, perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so, um, appreciate everybody coming down this evening. A lot of great conversation. I'm going to start off with West Essex Highlands. Um, and Rachel, I still see that you're here, hanging in there. Uh, talked to a few of your, your neighbors and folks, um, from Mayfair and, and Estro. Um, 2015, when I, uh, first served on the council, this is one of the first items that we had to address. And I want to, uh, thank the mayor for coming in this evening and to give the history for everyone because, you know, it's important for us to sit here and listen to the whys. How did things happen? How did we get here? And I feel like a lot of times we don't take the time to do that and we really need to because a lot of these issues and a lot of these situations that we're in today are complex. And unless you really take time to examine the, the, the moving balls, um, with all that goes on, it, it's, it is gets complicated and frustrating to follow. Lot of time was spent. I'm not going to spend too much time now. The mayor did a great job. Um, one of the things I remember Shirley Bishop, outstanding job that she did for us, representing us, uh, and, and Mr. Trank as well. I had even asked for a traffic light that be paid for at Oval Road. If you know, when you come out of Oval Road, there's no light right now. It's very close to the county. And that traffic light is going to be installed when the development does occur and it will be paid for by the developer. And that's one of the many things that came out of what the council wanted back then that felt that it was important. Um, I did not recall the building looking at the picture that it was going to be that close to where it appears now. So that alarmed me. Um, but again, we're going to keep fighting this and, and whatever we, we can do, and I'm going to defer to, to the mayor and administration and council on that. But, um, it's something that's been important to all of us for many years and we're, we're going back to a while, one with Councilman Scarb, Scarbnick years ago, over 20 years ago, was fighting this cause um, with, with this, uh, development. And here we are over 20 years later. Um, but yeah, it's, it's getting close to something getting built and, um, you know, there are concerns out there. So we're, you know, we're going to be in tune to it. So, so don't worry there, but we are limited because of the litigation with the Fair Housing Authority. Um, and it was very frustrating to sit and, and listen to Ms. Bishop and, and you know, we did all we could to, you know, make sure we got what we can. The, there was many more units involved prior, as the mayor explained earlier this evening. And even to where we, we have gotten in the settlement, um, you know, it was disappointing. We were hoping to get a lot lower, a lot lower than what we, we received in the settlement. So we'll just keep working it. To the special needs community, um, you know, 10 years as a school board member, uh, seeing a lot of faces here tonight coming out. Um, was, was special. Um, great people, a lot of supporters, a lot of passion. And you know, these flag raisings are not hosted by the township. We obviously have our, our front lawn out here for, for all to come and partake. We love to be supportive to everyone, but as tonight was perfect example of some complications with, you know, uh, with, with the community and it was interesting, um, to see how that played out and in a positive way, how all came together and to see new like residents we haven't, uh, seen in the public before come forward. And, and I, I felt bad. I, I missed the ceremony myself because I was out of town. But, um, to all those, um, who come out and support our, our children, we, we always appreciate all that you do. Uh, Ms. Jones, I know you brought up a couple of concerns being new to the township. You could well assure that you are in a great place. Our autistic program is one of the best in the state, if not the best in the state. And, uh, again, all the hard work of all the advocacy groups and, and our Board of Education and the work that they do and our, our special needs community is just proof of that. Uh, you know, Mr. Charles spoke this evening. Um, you know, he, his advocacy for the special needs playground and, and unfortunately that opened during COVID and, and ribbon cutting kept getting delayed and postponed. And it's time that we do do that this spring. And, uh, and we need to apologize to him for the delay in that because he worked very hard along with Krista Senic. And I know Alex Drum was here this evening, uh, many folks and Mr. Keo. Um, you know, big supporter of that and able to make that happen. And just so how that came about for Ms. Jones and other, uh, folks that are newer to the community, you know, that wasn't slated, um, to, um, that wasn't slated. We, we needed like our, I'm going to answer a question for Ms. Valdez, Velez for Colgate Park. Um, you know, we're, they're on, um, they're, they're, they're scheduled. They're scheduled for so many years for, um, the, our playgrounds to be renovated. And O'Connor Park was not at that particular time. And it was one of, um, the items that Mayor Parisi at the time and the council at the time, we, uh, put on a referendum to get, uh, passed to allocate funding, uh, towards that special needs playground. And the voters had voted. And it was a unique experience and, and that's how this community feels, um, in regards to how we respect inclusivity and, and how we care about our community. And that was just such a great example of how, uh, the community came together to bring that park to, um, to fruition. So, um, and Ms. Jones, a few of the other items that you mentioned this evening, I encourage you to, to talk to the school district because a lot of those items were, are covered, uh, by the district and they, you know, the, they should be able to help you out with those, with those issues. And you could always reach out to me on, on the website. Again, former school board member, so I, I, I could help navigate that for you. Um, let's see here. Ms. Ruffo, good to see you this evening as well. Great advocate for Gregory School and our safety concerns. Many years we've applied for safe routes, uh, uh, to schools grant, uh, working with our pedestrian safety committee, committee as well. Been very successful of a couple of awards there, uh, bus loop at, uh, Gregory School. Uh, was something that, uh, got done that that Lonnie's for all their hard work. So yeah, we just, you know, an area that is highly, um, has high traffic areas being a county road and, uh, GPS is cutting through right in the heart uh, during school hours. So, um, yeah, we'll keep working that as well to make sure that our routes to schools are safe. Uh, and also Ms. Velez, uh, as well, appreciate your advocacy. Um, one other comment about the pool, um, the pool repairs. You know, they were needed, but again, the parks are on a separate schedule. So what happens in the, the pool area versus the, our parks are two separate items. But I'm sure Mr. K would be more than glad to, to speak with you in regard to that. And congratulations on him on his, uh, 30 years and for all that he, he does for us. Uh, Mr. Thapar, I, I, I had supported you. I, I've known, I've, I've, you know, know of you in the community and, um, you know, asked questions about some of the emails that came through. And I know, you know, folks have their opinions on different things and to the, to the Mike Brick's point of things that are said and, and maybe sometimes misinterpreted. Yeah, uh, I'm glad, uh, my colleague, uh, one of my colleagues went back and reexamined that, um, so, um, to reinstate you. I would look forward to, to voting a second time for you. Cannabis ordinance. So, you know, I know we had a busy agenda and we were going to get to it this evening. I even had asked my council colleague, you know, if we could work on that. I know this was going to be a heavy agenda. Uh, we got to get that done. We had been debating that. It were only at 100 feet out. Needs to be. There's agreements made during the course of this whole past year. We have, uh, investors that that are trying to plan accordingly. And we need to get that done. Need to get that done. Um, there is, I was really disappointed. We didn't pass that at the last meeting. We're all entitled for our, our, uh, various opinions, but we're not, you know, we also need to make sure we have an ordinance in place that's going to be protect, protective of, uh, of the community. Now I'm going to leave it at that this evening and I look forward to having that conversation soon, very soon. Let's see, before I go to that, who else came out? Lot of speakers tonight. I'm gonna, Mr. Uh, Nora and Mr. Badger. I can't thank both of you enough for your years of service. Not easy to chair. And it's not like there were, uh, year after year elections for those positions. Talk about the climate and how people come to the podium. Not everybody anxious to, uh, chair, chair those meetings. And that's why, uh, you gentlemen kept getting reappointed year after year. So thank you for your service and for, uh, for both of you and, um, yeah, and the zoning board, they, they have an opportunity to vote. They have opportunity to vote year after year for who they want in that seat. And, uh, they've been doing that and I supported them. And they've been doing that and I supported them continuing to do that. For year after year. Mike Brick, also thank you for Earth Day. You did a great job putting that together for the community and for speaking. Again, the remarks about people with slanderous comments. I've been the victim of that myself, even by a person that appeared this evening. And yeah, it's disappointing, but again, we have thick skin. That's why we're up here. So I'm going to get to the point, Mr. Mr. Trank. I support it. I appreciate seeing a lot of faces this evening, a lot of people coming out to support the township attorney. And we, you know, we're not going to agree on that, obviously. Which was disappointing for me because I feel that one particular. Issue which we had discussed in closed session, I know my colleague and I debated this amongst ourselves. And I really can't talk about it because it was a closed session item, but I felt that direction was carried out by the township attorney. And. You know, and he did play his role and what he needed to do for that particular situation, which we can't talk about. But I know for many years, even when I was a school board member, having to deal with our township attorney. He's done a stellar job. Liberty Middle School would not have happened without his creativity. His. His support and again, going back to history lessons in the township, going back, Liberty Middle School. Wasn't there, just wasn't there. I became involved years ago as. Which got me on the school board and got me involved in the community because Redwood School had overcrowding issues. We didn't have the two additions we have now. We didn't, we did not have space. My daughter was in a gym class with ninety students, triple gym class, as Patty Van Kalenberg had told me years ago. And I was advocating to get a new gym put on. There wasn't even the gym at Redwood School, the new gym. And working with Mr. Trank as a PTA parent and with our school board. And trying to solve overcrowding issues with the advocates in this town and then Liberty Middle School came into play. Are all great things that a lot of folks don't know about because we don't talk about because it was twenty years ago. And they wouldn't happen without all that advocacy and that legal expertise. And to hear about this recent decision. Which I get and I commend anyone who advocates. That's great. And we go, we talk about redevelopment and it hazard and, you know. Again, I'm not, it's late, but Livingston, Roseland, Verona and Qualwell. They don't have, they, to my recollection, didn't have lighted buildings, but they all got approved for redevelopment projects. Because that's where the bar was with the redevelopment law. What did we get out of it? We got ten Rooney Circle for a dollar, one point two million dollars in rental income year after year. For our tenant that we inherited. We're going to have a brand new library, which the. The developer has given us one point five million for renovations, a dog park. They're building sixty-five affordable housing units plus the site over here. The old library is gonna also be sixty-five, a hundred percent affordable housing units. And if it wasn't for Mr. Trent being proactive with making that affordable housing. We, you know, obviously we lost that case, but because there was a backup plan. We were able, we're going to be able to provide seniors sixty-five affordable units to be able to live. And also have seventy-five hundred square feet of housing. Plus be able to give a million dollars to the renovations of the new library. All great things, all great things. But again, we're here to debate issues, agree, to disagree. And you know, it gets frustrating at times. But yeah, there's a lot of history in our township and I thank all those who came out tonight to speak passionately. And OSPAC too, the whole OSPAC situation, we wouldn't have OSPAC. Lot of great things in the town that just weren't put here. A lot of blood, sweat and tears that go into all these great things and amenities we have. And I'm going to end on a positive note. And that is. The hockey team. Very, very proud of our young athletes. Again, history lesson, ten years ago. Going back twenty years ago when the hockey team did real well and everything was great, then it kind of went away and we had a lot of. Lot of parents, you know, and young athletes trying to put this team together. And it was the vision of Brad Pallant and Sal Anterton from Mountaintop League. That wanted to get this going and it was their commitment. And and Mr. Keo and Eddie Johnson and Coach Eddie. And Mr. Moore, it was just all that effort of everyone coming together. To build up that program and to have our young athletes, our high school coaches work with our young athletes. And to see these programs come to fruition with these great championships that we're seeing this year. Both on not just the boys teams, but also the girls teams is really a great feeling. And makes validates all the time we spend in doing what we do. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellano. Madam Clark.
Consent agenda, approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, April fourth, twenty twenty-three. Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, none. Resolutions. Council President, the administration is pulling one sixty-three dash twenty-three.
One sixty-three?
Yes. Are there any other resolutions being pulled this evening?
Council colleagues, are there any questions regarding any of our resolutions this evening?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, what resolution?
Yeah, I wanted to pull one sixty-five.
Can you give us the question?
Yeah, the resolution authorizing the executive session. It was brought to my attention by a constituent that that could be a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. That it was not properly notified because it wasn't specific enough. So I just wanted to ask the clerk if, to give an opinion on that.
Is any validity to that? I asked legal. That was the description I was given.
Yeah, because this person said to me that that's a category. It's not specific enough. So I just wanted an opinion on that and given the time. I'd like to table that till our next meeting.
You want to table the executive session?
Yeah.
We have counsel here this evening, special counsel to meet with you. He's been here an hour or so.
The personnel matter. You don't give names.
Okay. You know.
Mr. Kaiser.
Mr. Kaiser.
I mean, I haven't honestly didn't have a chance to read the resolution because I'm away. But generally, it doesn't have to be much more specific than that. There's, you don't have to disclose a name. And so if it doesn't have a name, that's appropriate. I don't know what, other than it's a personnel matter, I don't know what you have to put to me. That's sufficient.
I'm asking you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Moving on.
School board does it almost every agenda.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on. Any other questions, Councilwoman? Questions? Okay, thank you.
I have some, Council President. So I don't want to pull them. I just, I think we can answer the question before we even get to it. So on one sixty-one, Mr. Gross and I had some conversation about. About that, although I didn't. Yeah, one sixty-one. So can you just give us a brief description, Mr. Gross? This is a grant of a little over three million dollars. So obviously it's not taxpayer money to do some remediation. On various properties in the valley. Can you speak to that, what our commitment as a township is to that project?
If you, this is a piece of property that we actually acquired. Probably in the last ten years from a, from a tax, basically a tax sale. Where the owner of the property abandoned the property, stopped paying the taxes and then we end up getting the property for taxes. The property that we got is contaminated. Contaminated to the point of it's going to cost four million dollars to clean the property up. We own that property and to the extent that we own it, we're responsible. Or ultimately, we're going to have to be responsible and we were able to go out and work with the state and find monies. To pay for the, pay for it. It's a four million dollar cleanup. And of which we found funding for seventy-five percent. And that's what, that's what you're being asked tonight is to accept the grant, the three million dollar portion of the grant. The grant will require a one million dollar match, twenty-five percent of the total cost. Little bit more than that, one point one million. Given, given, given the history of this project, this is a piece of property that's been vacant and unused for probably fifty years. And already substantive use anyway. And it's part of the, our efforts in that neighborhood to try to renovate. You know, bring back and bring affordable housing as well as market housing to the general neighborhood. And so we ask that to consider accepting the grant.
Do we know what, or do we have a guesstimate of what the taxes would be generated from that property post-development?
Well, it depends on the development. I can get you in terms of what's being anticipated. I can get that for you. I don't have it here tonight.
So yeah, what I'd like to know, and I'm obviously going to support getting a three million dollar grant. And I know we're obligated regardless, even if we didn't get the grant, we'd have to then figure out a way to get it done. And it would cost more than one million. But would like to know what the anticipated taxes are. And what our, what our sale price, how much we're selling it, what is the compensation we're receiving for that property from?
Right.
The developer. And those are really the only two questions that I have on that.
I'll get you those details.
Thank you. And then on. Just for one sixty-six, can you just help the public, tell the public where that roughly eight hundred thousand dollars is coming from? You know, they don't necessarily know, so.
Yeah, well, actually, let's go back at the last meeting, the council approved. For the tax for the, doing the revaluation this due to two thousand twenty-five. Two and a half million dollar special emergency bond. That will allow us to pay for this over a five-year period as opposed to paying for it upfront. And as part of that, as I described, it was, it is, it is the tax maps to be finished and redone. It is to pay for inspectors to go to each and every property in town and do a physical inspection of that. And it's to pay for the digitization of all of our property files. So that when those inspectors go to those locations, that they will have access to all the information about those locations. So that they can properly place a valuation on, or have the best shot properly, putting the best valuation on the property. Keeping in mind that evaluation issue, it's not so much an issue of making sure that it's, that the properties are valued at the highest in value. It's that they get valued at the proper value because this, this whole process is about. Fair distribution of taxes amongst our taxpayers. And then that fairness is based on the system, which says your portion of taxes. At any given time is directly related to your percentage value of property in the township. So we want to make sure that from a fairness point of view, that we get the best job. We want to make sure, the next thing, we want to make sure that. We don't, we don't fly too high. We don't get them, we don't get the values too high because that just ends up us having appeals. And then that's millions of dollars that we have to pay back that we have to raise. So it becomes, it certainly was problematic the last time and it will likely be problematic this time. But we think that this will, this will shave quite a bit of the risk off of that, so.
And just for further clarity, this particular eight hundred thousand is coming out of that two and a half million that's already been approved?
That's correct.
Right, so this is not an additional eight hundred thousand. This has already been handled. It's within the two and a half million as part of.
It was anticipated.
Right. All right, that was it for me, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Councilwoman?
Is this, when is it appropriate for me to ask to have the resolution that was pulled one forty-seven?
When we, when we, when we get to unfinished business. We're only right now doing the resolutions that are on the agenda.
Have questions? First one being one fifty-four. All right, one fifty-four. Is it an RFP or an RFQ? There are a few resolutions where it'll say there's a response to the request for proposal. And then on the resolution, it'll say request for qualification. So it's both.
It's actually both. The process is, you're talking about the awards for the building and property and facility assessments. Okay, they're professional service agreements and professional service agreements, we use RFQs. In order to do the, the portion of the due diligence on pay to play. Then from that list, the group of people that we have gone through and cleared for the pay to play law. We then solicit from multiple ones of those quotes. On a, a. Our RFP basis with the scope of the work that we're looking to accomplish. And we go out and we get them to get it so that we get not just, not just a pay to play. We also get competitive quotes so that we can, we can look at and evaluate. Make sure that, you know, we're getting the best price and the best value for our work.
Thank you for explaining. And then another question is one six, on resolution one sixty-six. The state shows an additional eight thousand six hundred sixteen dollars and sixty cents for the yearly costs, the yearly software cost. So is that going to be charged every year or is that a one-time? I just want clarification.
I'm sorry.
And if it is a yearly fee, what if fees go up?
What, I'm sorry, which?
One sixty-six?
One sixty-six.
It's the same software we just discussed?
Oh, it's, it's, it's not an increased price. It's an annual cost. So that will become an annual cost to us, which is really, really reasonable.
Is there a way to like lock in that rate for a few years? What if the rate changes next year or the year after? It's kind of vague in the resolution.
We can't commit for, on an operational basis and those are going to be operational costs. We can't commit beyond the budget here, frankly, on this unless we go out for like a five-year program. This particular group, this is a really interesting, interesting contract. Up until now, when you digitize forms, you have to take, you know, and you have access to them. You don't need to have the physical forms. Up until now, you, we, we also then had to take those forms and put them in a warehouse. Pay to have them stored. State of New Jersey has approved this company. As far as we know, it's the only company they approved. And a procedure that allows us to do business, they're going to scan all these documents. And then we'll have the electronic versions of them and then they're going to destroy them. So that we don't have to pay for the storage of these documents over, all over that time. So part of the system is that, that. So part of the system is that, 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 that our documents are going to be stored on, in, in the cloud. Is what we're paying for, for that number. Now, should that number go crazy, we get our documents back, because there are documents, they're not, they don't belong to them. And we can go to whatever other companies that may be out there that can, that can provide it. Meantime, we've already got everything digitized. Not only, not only do we have everything digitized that we, this big group that we're doing now, but moving forward. Part of this, what's in this cost, which for eight, that number is very, very reasonable. We're going to ship all of our documents to them as they come in. And, and they're going to take them and scan them and destroy them. So we're going to be able to truly get to what in essence is a paperless situation. Where we're, where we're actually going to be extremely green, and, and we're, we're certainly going to be efficient.
That's great, thank you so much.
Can I ask a follow up question on that, Councilman? What is our procedure protocol? For inadvertent or mistakenly destroyed documents, meaning? We thought it was digitized, we thought it was scanned and put in the cloud, but, you know, there were, you know, fifty pages and, you know, two of them. Didn't get scanned, so.
In this new process, everything is documented now, obviously, now, is, is, can, can there be mistakes? Obviously, they're human beings, but, but, but there, there are controls to make it, you know, so, a, a duplicate, duplicate records. Of, of this, so that we have a record of what we sent, they have a record of what they received, and we can compare them. So we, we do have that, you know, we, that, that would be put in place for this, we don't have that now. But we have the same problems now, we, we, you know, we, we, we hold on, our problem, not a problem, one of the things is we hold on the records for.
Oh, no, that's a problem, walk through town hall.
It causes problems, but, but it's not, I mean, we're supposed to not throw these documents out. So, but, you know. It, it's, we don't have. Extreme controls on that, you know, because, just because of, just because of the volume, you know, it's, it's like, you know, how do you find? It, it's, it's a, it's a needle in a haystack. One, one, when we're doing it on a more regular basis and an efficient basis, we're going to have a better control of it, because we have a better understanding of what we're doing and what we're dealing with. You know, what we're looking at on a day to day basis is going to be a lot less, so we're going to understand the variations.
All right, and just one more point of clarification, all of these professional service contracts that we're dealing with tonight. The funding for those are coming from the capital budget.
Yeah, these are, these are, basically with, with, with capital projects. There's, there's a category called preliminary expense, or, 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 you know. Plant, that enables you to plan out a project using capital funds. So it's, it's certainly, that's what, that's what all these are.
Got it, with the exception of the eight thousand dollars that the council members.
That's correct, that's correct.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Council President, a couple of things on going, going back to one. This is sixty six. Why, just curious, there's only one company that the state approved, I mean, how does that? How do we get competitive pricing if that's the only state approved company? There's no one else, I mean, that. Like, how do you?
I mean, I can't answer it for the state, I mean, they're, they're very particular about the, first off, it's, 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 it's the first time we've seen that they allow us to destroy documents. So that alone, I mean, the cost, the cost of storing documents, we estimated to be somewhere in, in, you know, near a six figure number ultimately. To do, to do offsite storage, so we're going to save a lot of money in that long term. It is what it is, I mean, there's nobody else out there that we can get, the, in order for us to do it. To, to, to go through this process and build a system to try to get approval would cost us far more than that. In terms of just our, our equipment and software, the, the kinds of redundant. Networks that you have to have, in other, in other words, these people have, this group, they have servers in three or four different locations across the country. So if there's a fire somewhere, there's backups, multiple backups, I mean, for us to build that kind of structure, we couldn't.
Yeah, no, I, 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 I get that, I just wish there was another, you know, more competition with pricing.
Absolutely.
Well, I thought about, I've thought about calling some of my friends to see if they could open one when I saw it. I'm serious, I really did, I was like.
We have a group in West Orange that does that exact same thing, minority owned, document retention, digitization, storage.
But not approved by the state of New Jersey.
I, well, you know, and I'm shocked that Iron Mountain, we had this conversation, I'm shocked that Iron Mountain isn't on our approved list. I mean, they're one of the largest in that space, and we see their trucks around town all the time, but I'm, I'm willing to accept that, that, you know, there's. Even if they're not the only one, the one, only one that you know of. And as far as I can tell, these numbers, they seem reasonable. Now, I'm not an expert, but, you know, I've got to rely on.
Okay, one fifty nine and one sixty, the purchase of the playground equipment, I just want to bring to the public's attention going on that. Schedule that the rec department has our parks on, so Minish. Minish Park and Club Boulevard Park, which is the little park next to Roosevelt Middle School. They will be getting completed with these monies that we're approving this evening. And then in regards, Mr. Gross, to all of the projects, which is great to see, and our, our engineer has been very busy. With her due diligence, where does this put us with the facilities study? Our facility, like our townwide facilities assessment study?
Well, that's what these are.
Yeah, I know, but there's many more projects in there, or this will complete it for this cycle?
This is going to be for the new cycle. In terms of what, for instance, when we did this with the, the, the fire department, all the fire department buildings. We'll be, we're going to be back, when we do capital, we're going to put some money in for, to, to work on, on. The, finish some, some of the work on the fire department that, that we have planned already, and that's what these are all about, is future planning. And to see, number one, what, what can't wait and, and what can wait.
Yeah.
And so with the fire department, for instance, we had money allocated for them, which now there, there's a, a, a major issue with. One of the parking lots that we have to get resolved, and so as the wall is deteriorating, so the money that we had earmarked to go for other things for the fire department. Now, now have to go for that at the fire department. So we'll, we'll be obviously replenishing that, but that, this is all part and parcel. If we get these studies done, we're going to, not, not that it's going to catch everything, because, you know, that, that's not the way that life goes. But we're certainly going to be a much better head, we, we learned a lot by doing what we did with the fire department to be know that, okay, this is, we can map out now the next four or five years. Of our capital, of, of what the priorities are, and more importantly, we find out what can't wait. To me, that's what the scary part, we're, we're having a conversation today, the windows might not open at, 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 at the CAT Center. And so, well, we, we got to put it for new windows. But if we do this evaluation, maybe what we find, and I'm just making this up, maybe what we find is. The windows aren't the problem, the problem is there's leak in the, in the attic, and because of that, the, the, there's water that we can't see going into the walls, and the walls have actually shifted. The windows don't open, because the walls are, 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 are not, not stable. So we really need to solve the wall problem, not the window problem, but we, we don't, we, if we, if we just deal with the things that we see, you know, then. That, that's, we, we're, we're not doing our job.
So we're doing a municipal home inspection.
Basically, yeah.
All right, thank you. Okay, now if we'll go to some resolutions that I will need to pull. One forty eight dash twenty three. One fifty six dash twenty three. And one fifty eight dash twenty three. We can pull those.
One forty eight.
Last one? One fifty eight, twenty three, and one fifty six, twenty three. I'm recusing from those.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm.
I have one forty eight, is that correct?
One forty eight, yes.
And then one fifty six and one fifty eight. I'm recusing. You can take them together, once I step out, you don't have to do them separately, but we have to pull them so that I can recuse.
Okay, all right.
And so then, are there any other questions, or is there anything else that needs to be pulled?
I'll wait.
So can, since you're pulling those, can someone, either you or Mr. Gross, give us some understanding of this company, P S and S, is there? Is there something we need to know there? Is there some relationship that we need to be concerned about?
Well, obviously not, we wouldn't be recommending it if there was. You know, you know, the, these are firms that we, that do business to, that have gone through our process for pay to play. And they're, and, and again, they're, you're, these are firms that we've used before, and we, we feel very comfortable with.
We use P S and S before?
I'm sorry?
P S and S.
P S and S, that's.
We've used them in the past? How, how much history we have with them?
Reasonable, I mean.
One year, five years, ten years?
More than that, Mr. Barnes was there.
More than five years.
Yeah, right now. He's their legal counsel. So we've had a relationship since he's no longer been with the municipality.
Got it. Understood.
Are we ready to vote on the consent?
Yes, can we vote on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Go move. Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented.
No, the second consent agenda.
Yes, let me. Well, we have more, we have three. Okay, so. Okay. Okay. Hold on a second, all right, so is there a motion to approve one forty eight, one fifty six, and one fifty eight?
So move.
Second.
Okay, I'll just. Apologies. Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa?
Yes.
And let the record show that Council President Williams stepped out because she has refused herself.
We're going to do the.
Coordinates is on second and final.
Not the executive session.
Well, that was the other question I had, because. Mr. Kizer?
Yes.
Hi, so Councilwoman Deborah Michael wants to make a motion to add back one forty seven dash twenty three. Can we do that at this point in the meeting?
I don't see why not, you, you'd need four votes to do it, because you need to evoke to suspend the rules and add a. Add that item, and my, my, the, the agenda I have just says removed, it doesn't have. Doesn't have, I don't know what it was, so.
Well, I, I have it in front of me.
Okay.
Yeah, so I can read it, and that's so everyone knows what it is, but we'll wait until Council President gets back here.
As long as you have at least four votes, you can do that.
Okay. Don't bother, because we don't have the votes. It's just a waste of our time. We need four votes to allow it back on.
So.
Right, you're raising, you're raising it, you're raising it from the floor, it's currently removed, it's not on the agenda, so to put it on the agenda, you need to suspend the rules and to add it, and. You need a super majority to do that, that's all.
Okay. To put it back on the agenda.
Then we only need three votes?
Right.
Wanted her to have her sent to me, recorded publicly, which is. Why I thought we would do, but we can do it next time.
Yeah.
Sounds like a plan.
Yeah.
Which is getting pulled again.
If we don't, yeah, I know. Yeah. All right, so. Why I bring my pencil and not my pen. All right, so I'll, I'll make sure that gets added again.
All right, Council, Council President has returned. We still have the executive session to deal with, right?
Yes, so let us, now.
Can I just update the Council President, so while you were away? We asked Mr. Kizer about adding the one forty seven back onto the agenda. He said you need a super majority, you need four votes in order to do so, because it's a motion from the floor, we do not have those votes, so. Councilwoman Deborah Michael asked that it be added to the agenda on May second. Okay, so that's what we're going to do, we're not going to vote on it tonight.
Thank you.
Okay.
So now I would move for us to.
In order to do that, we have to clear council chambers, because Mr. Kizer has to be in on the executive session.
Okay, Kelly, just put him on the phone in another room?
Oh, we could do that, yes, of course, yeah, that was.
The budget presentation first.
Would you like to do the budget presentation?
Probably should actually.
It won't take too.
People want to see it. Counsel.
The presentation, I'm not expecting.
I love your optimism.
I'm sorry, counsel. Counselman. Our independent counsel, counselor, counselor, thank you. Are you comfortable, can you give us fifteen more minutes of your time this evening before we go into executive session? Thank you, I appreciate you, Mr. Gross.
Okay, thank you, and this is a, this presentation. The PowerPoint will be, will be placed on the, the website for anyone to see. So if, if I do, in the, in the interest of time tonight. Not necessarily going to read everything that's on here, but certainly everything will be posted. And some of what we're going to talk about is basically what government does, you know, we're, we're, we're the balance, you know, we, we have, we have to worry about. Balancing services and costs, quality and quantity, and as we all always have, do, do, doing more with less. And then also, you know, dealing with the demands from our, from the residents of more services, but paying less taxes. Again, this is just kind of some of our challenges, the, the type of this municipality, it's a big municipality, I would like, I like to say. You know, you see, you go to place, place, you saw, you see a lot of different things, you come to West Orange, you see everything. We, 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 three hundred and sixty five days a year, twenty four hours a day, we're operating and, and, and. And operating on, on high drive. Again, West Orange is completely full in terms of the level of service that it provides, it's across the board. And, and to everyone and everywhere. And quantity versus quality, obviously, it's not so, it's not, it's not, it's not good enough just to, to, to offer services. Yet we have to offer high quality services, we have, you know, we have a, a, a residence, residents and, and, and visitors alike. That really have high expectations. So, real quick, what are your tax, as, as this is in total, where do our taxes go? No, no big surprise, lion's share sixty two percent goes to the Board of Education. Twenty five percent comes to the township, about twelve percent to, to the county. And one, one percent to the library. And a smaller portion to open space. The municipal budget, just our portion, is about a hundred million dollars. And you can see again, the, the total personnel, personnel, personnel. If you want to look at what, what you're going to impact this budget, anything significant, it's going to be personnel. If you got, you know, fifteen percent, sixteen percent, that's fixed costs and all other expenses. Around twenty percent, and even within that twenty percent, a lot of that is very, very difficult to, to have control over. It's either long term contracts or expenses like garbage collection, which you, you, you know, you have to be very careful and, 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 and. It impacts residents directly and every day, so. In going, going to the employees, our employee process salaries and overtime is the majority. But then you've got health benefits, retiree health benefits, and then employees' pensions and, and employer taxes. So, a-again, when you, when you, when you look at, you look at impacting the costs in, in the budget, uh, and you, and you see that the, your major expense is personnel, and you see that in that personnel, that the personnel costs are driven in, in almost half of it with, with benefits. Um, you see the struggle that you have to try to, to, to hold on to, and when those benefits, um, are continued to expand. Um, number of full-time employees, um, you know, we, we hit a high in two thousand and six, two, three hundred and seventy-five employees, um, in two twelve, our, our, our current low, went to two, two oh four, and now we're hovering around to a three oh five, three oh seven, um, a number of employees. Um, yet our personnel costs can skyrocket, you know, they, they, they go up, uh, as you, as you see from this chart, from two thousand and ten on. Um, the fact that, you know, we, we've leveled out with our staffing doesn't change the fact that our, our costs from, from two thousand and twelve, we've gone from around forty-five million up nearly sixty-five million. So, let's talk about this year, budget year, jump right into it. This is, this is the list. This, this is the increases and problems that, that we are seeing. Um, contractual souring wages, almost two million dollar increase, pension cost one point two six million. Uh, health benefits, no increase at all. Um, library contribution, three hundred thousand, debt service, seven hundred thousand. Garbage and recycling for this year, and that's for like, for, for four months, about a million dollars. Fire hydrant service for the year, two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the back pay, uh, issued three, uh, seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And a loss of reserves and COVID funding, five million dollars, so a total of eleven point one five million dollars. That's our challenge in this year, and that is big, that's a big challenge for us. Um, let's talk about it specifically. Contractual souring wages, uh, almost two million dollars. You got, you, you have two issues, you got three percent increase for all employees, that's about one point one million, and about seven to eleven percent, uh, percent increases based on steps. Steps, if, if, just to be clear what it is, when we hire employees, they're, they're, they, they, they have seven to ten years to get to the max. So, we save money on that. But we also, we also hurt on that in terms of when we have to, uh, have, every year, we, we have a big jump. We have a jump of seven to ten, seven to eleven percent, averaging nine. So, I estimate that the, that, that that cost for this year is about eight hundred and eighty thousand. So that makes up the two million dollars this year in contractual souring wages. Uh, pension cost, one point two million dollars. Uh, that number is set by the state that we get a bill, it's not an itemized bill, it's not this much for John Rose, this much for Chief. It, it, it's, it's, it's just a flat bill, it's not, and, and we just have to pay it. Uh, it's an actuarial accounting of what the, what, uh, West Orange has to pay in order to support the pension program. Um, pension cost, just a graph to see, we will back at how, you know, it spiked in two thousand and ten and then went down a little bit, and now it's going back up again. Uh, health benefits, zero. Uh, it's worth mentioning that had the township moved the state health benefits program, uh, it's twenty-two percent increase that they're, they're, they're giving out this year would cost township taxpayers over three million dollars. It's not, that's not something that's in our way to thank goodness. Library allocation, three hundred and seven thousand, uh, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand of that is mandatory, you don't have a choice. Uh, you, you, you have to do it because it's, it's tied to the assessed value, the average assessed value over the previous few years. Uh, there's also a request from, from the library for an additional a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, uh, to assist them in, um, their operation of the new library. Uh, and there was already, already in the budget a sixty-seven thousand dollar voluntary contribution, uh, from last year that is being requested again. Debt service, um, about seven hundred thousand dollars, it's a, it's a fixed cost, it is what it is. Uh, results from the, the, the short-term, uh, the short-term rate increases. Uh, there's a, we were in a situation where we're a yield curve, an inverted yield curve right now. Um, fortunately, we're still maintaining our, our, our double A rating, but for instance, on the very, very same day last month, I sold, I sold bond anticipation notes and bonds and got the same exact interest rate for both. So, the short-term rate is, was identical to the long-term rate, and that has never happened in, in, in my lifetime. Garbage and recycling collection, uh, we're, we're looking, we, we did a presentation on it previously. Based on that presentation, uh, for the last four months of this year, uh, would, would, if, if all, if we don't make some change, some significant changes, we're looking at somewhere around a million dollars for that four-month period. Fire hydrant service, BPU approved and rate hikes, um, or, you know, we, we pay, we pay for each single fire, um, hydrant. We, we pay a, 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 uh, annual fee. And this is, this year is gonna go up two hundred thousand, it went up, actually went up last year. Um, this year, we have the budget for it. COVID back pay, seven hundred and six, seven hundred and sixty dollars, that was paid, um, and on back, back in January. And that's, that's in this year's budget. Um, this is the one that's the, the sticky one, depleted reserves and COVID funding, about five million dollars. Um, we've, we've talked about it over the past few years that, that we've been filling the gap from, from lower no-tax increases with the use of reserves and grant funds to cover recurring costs that weren't otherwise funded. And frankly, tho- those funds are running out. And what I'm gonna show you now, I'm gonna show you why, why that's happened. Um. We had a great history of, uh, over the past twelve years and the previous, Mayor Parisi, uh, his, his view of the world was, um, money was better left in the pockets of our taxpayers, uh, than, than taking it out to, to build up our reserves. And, um, this is, this is a chart showing how we fared compared to all the other municipalities in the counties. You can see, we're over, over that period, over that twelve-year period, we were the lowest and basically over twelve years, came in somewhere under twenty percent, so that's about one point seven percent on average increase. Um, this is, this is a chart that shows, um, that the, the red is the increase in taxes, um, for West Orange Municipal, West Orange. The blue is the other taxing agencies, the Board of Education and the, uh, county together. And you can see that their, their change in taxes was more linear, more, more direct, uh, more, um, consistent. Uh, ours was, was not, and, and that, again, that goes back to, uh, Mayor Parisi's view that, that if we could figure out a way to leave, to not raise the taxes, we didn't. And, um, that's, that's the viewpoint of that, 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 that shows that. Um. But now this is, this shows, the blue line is, is the, is the West Orange budget over, um, that same period of time. And the red line is the taxes. And what you see is you see, if you get down towards the end, you see how the, the difference widens. And, and you, you, if you look at it, you know, at the very, very end, um, that space between the, which is basically around sixty million to, to a hundred million, uh, you, you've got a forty million dollar difference. If you go back here to two, year two thousand, you've got about a twenty million dollar difference. So, as, as the budget has gone up, the taxes haven't gone up. Again, that's consistent with the, 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 the focus on, on not raising taxes. Um. Now, what this, this shows a little more clearly, this is a change by percentage. So, if you, if in two thousand and seven, budgets, the budget revenue was what, or the, the, sorry, the taxes what, what, where they were, and the expenses where we were. And you see it that, that the expenses went up much faster than the revenue did. So what happened in that period? How's that even possible? How in the world can your, can your expenses go up at a higher rate than, than your, than your taxes did? And the reason, the way, the way you did that is you found other sources to, to fund it. You found tax, you found grants, maybe, uh, to some extent. But the big thing you did, we did, was we fu- we funded with our reserves. And, you know, we used any, any, any dollar we could find to fill the gap, uh, instead of raising taxes. And so, which worked, worked and worked until it doesn't. If you can imagine at home, if you keep hitting your savings account, which is what your reserves are, sooner or later, if you don't replenish them, um, you're gonna run out of reserves. And that's where we are now, we've run out of those reserves. So, what do we do next? Well, first thing, we examine our operations for efficiencies, um, but we got a, we have a eleven million dollar deficit. That's, that's a lot more than just efficiencies. Um, we find additional revenues, um, we're u-update existing user fees, examine establishing new practical user fees. And that's why we, we, we've, we've asked you to, to look at ordinances, and we're gonna, next meeting, we'll have, we're gonna have more fee ordinances on to, to convert so that they can be, we can be more nimble with setting the rates by resolution as opposed to having ordinance changes. Um, you have to examine staffing, you know. It. This budget is driven by staffing. You know, you're, you're, you're probably about eighty percent of your disposable budget is, is, is in staffing. So, it is certainly something, um, that, that you have to look in terms of, um, the, the, the services that we provide. And then, just as an example, this is, this is your budget and the categories that we spend. So it's four, you know, it's fourteen million dollars for insurance, fourteen million dollars for police, uh, you know, thirteen million dollars for debt service, twelve million dollars for fire. So these are all the places we serve, we, we, we say, we spend money. And somewhere in there, we have to find, um, some more, more revenues and, and, and expenses, um, to cover a eleven million dollar difference. Um, this goes a little bit, you know, so, so this, this is a, this is strictly by department. You can't cut out a department, you, you can't eliminate the police department. Uh, if, if, if you're looking at, at making service level changes, which you, you at least have to consider, uh, in this environment, you have to look deeper. So, we, what I tried to do is to, to go a little deeper, to give you a sense of, of what the different departments as a percentage ratio, uh, what, what their costs are in terms of the budget. It's not pure, it's not a hundred percent accurate, but I think it gives you some perspective, uh, as you, as you consider what to do to try to find a, a eleven million dollar difference in this budget. Um, this next slide is, is the same, it's, it's the next group down. It's, 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 you, you see, as you get further and further down, get smaller and smaller pieces of the pie, making substantial cuts in these smaller pieces of the pie, um, has, has dramatically less impact. So, you, 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 you have to think this through in terms of how to attack this budget. Um, the last thing is to balance service levels with the level of taxation. You, you're gonna have to, um, determine what level of taxation that you're comfortable with as opposed to what level of service, um, elimination or suspension that you're comfortable with. Uh, and, and as, as well as balan- balancing additional revenue streams, um, and with, with user fees and, and others, um, more that, you know, more in line with those that if you use it, you pay. Um, and of course, as we always do, looking for efficiencies. So. That's, that's the long and short of it. And so there's a lot to do, and we ask you tonight to, to, um, set dates for the, for hearings. I'll certainly entertain any questions you have tonight.
Yeah, are, are, when are we getting the budget vote?
Uh, you'll have them, uh, before Friday, you'll have, including, everything included.
And you'll have per household what this means?
Mm-hmm.
For year?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Gross, we appreciate you.
You, also, including that, um, if you cut X amount, how much that means per household, whatever.
I, I will give you, um, several amount, several metrics that you can measure by which, how you, um, I can give you back this.
Can you include some scenarios, uh, if we were to convert more short-term debt or less short-term debt to long-term? What our debt service would be?
So the rates are the same?
Well, some short-term debt.
Do we, you don't have an option on, on the short of, of, of delaying some of the debt you have to go long. Um, we are not, all of our short-term debt you could extend. Um, the, 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 the big, but where, where, where you, where you're running the cost is when you go from short-term to long-term.
For instance.
Not only, not only you have the interest rate, which is not a big risk right now considering what, because we're in the inversion curve. And we, and we, we already did some this year, I'm considering doing some, uh, later in the year, uh, as well. Um. And to answer your question, of course, I can give you an analysis on it. The, the big thing is, is that, so when you go long, that, let's say, third, let's say you've got, uh, a twelve million dollar bond, um, with a twelve-year life, you've gotta come up with a million dollars a year, pay the principal down.
Right.
And there's no out on that. And so, we might, you know, so I, I think we can, we should seriously look at that, um, for this year in the fall, because we have, we have some coming due in the fall. Um, but, you know, if you did two at twelve million, that's two million. If you did four, that's four million. So, while, but you get the idea, you know, you got to decide, you know, whether that's what you wanna go back to, you know, to the taxpayer year after year after year with those types of increases. And that's, it's certainly something for you to consider.
Right, so I just wanna get the data so that we can be, because to, uh, Councilwoman's point, e- e- even if the interest rates are similar now, short and long-term, we do have the principal payment that would have to go with it, but we also have to anticipate what's coming next. And it, it appears as if this Fed is determined to hold rates at a higher level for a longer period of time than people have expected. And if inflation doesn't act the way they expected to, they may have to continue raising rates now. So, we need to kinda understand those scenarios and how it will affect us next year and the year after. Yeah. Yeah, alright, so thank you.
Alright. Okay. Ordinance is on second and final reading?
Oh, we're not going into.
We should probably do this one since it's on.
Somebody's waiting.
And then you can go to executive.
Yeah, yes, well, well.
Yeah.
We have ordinance on first reading too, though.
Yeah, we can do both.
Yeah, but the public doesn't speak on that.
Right, right, right. That's true.
Um. Okay, ordinances on second and final reading, twenty-seven forty dash twenty-three, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter Seven, Traffic Subsection seven dash thirteen, Parking Prohibited at All Times on Certain Streets, and Adding Subsection seven dash thirteen point one, Emergency Parking on Linsley Avenue of the Revised General Ordinances of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final?
So moved, so. This is an opportunity for public comment.
Oh wait, I need to take a vote.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on ordinance twenty-seven forty dash twenty-three? No one in chambers, Mr. Gr- uh, Mr. Fagan?
Seeing none, Council President.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion for twenty-seven forty dash twenty-three.
So moved.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa? Council President Williams?
Yes. Okay, ordinance is on first reading, twenty-seven forty-one dash twenty-three, and ordinance amending Chapter Five, Section twenty-five nine C of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange in massage businesses, businesses. I know there was a question, uh, from. I know there was a question uh from Councilwoman Castellino as to why this revision was necessary. Uh Mr. Kaiser, are you available?
I'm available, but I don't, I'm not sure, you know, I'm not familiar with the ordinance which was prepared by Mr. Trank, so.
Okay.
And again, I haven't been able to read it because I'm I'm away, so.
All right, no problem.
You could follow up then before.
Yeah, could you make sure we understand what prompted this ordinance to be amended? Thank you so very much. We appreciate it.
I can pro- I can provide something before the next meeting, so.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate you. All right.
Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Tarfa, Council President Williams.
Yes, Council President, if I may, just for the public sake, what has been um eliminated is the is the requirement. For a tub or shower. I don't know what precipitated that.
Each of the stalls.
Yeah.
Not the bathrooms, but each of the actual rooms where the massage, yes, absolutely.
So the 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 dressing room does not have to any longer contain a tub or shower. But right, but it doesn't have to, and I think that's the main thing in there.
Well, my, I mean, we don't have to pontificate. We can just wait for the actual so that we can move right along. Absolutely. So um twenty-seven forty-two dash twenty-three and.
Yes, Chief. Yeah, yeah, what if you know anything about it?
Thank you.
So when that ordinance was drafted, we had a a major problem with prostitution, as most municipalities did, opening up in storefronts and so on. Under the guise of being uh massage bars, we uh crafted uh Richard Trank, myself and uh. Might have been Joe Fonzino back then, very restrictive ordinance, and that was part of it. In that time, since then, the DCA, state DCA, has uh licensed massage therapists. They weren't licensed at the time. So it's, you know, really under the state. It's not really necessary anymore. There are some legitimate licensed massage therapists that are looking to open that don't have that accommodation available to them in most places. So um the health director, Mike Fonzino, thought we should eliminate it. Uh Mr. Trank called me to discuss it to see if I had any problem with it. This has really gone away for for us as a one enforcement issue. So I did not have a problem with it, and that's why it was, you know, we all agree that it should be taken out.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, uh twenty-seven forty-two dash twenty-three and ordinance amending and supplementing chapter seven. Track traffic subsection seven dash seven point three, temporary parking prohibition for snow plowing and removal. Subsection seven dash twelve, parking prohibited for street cleaning and maintenance. Seven dash thirteen, no parking anytime, and seven dash fourteen, one C. Night parking prohibited of the revised general ordinances of the Township of West Orange.
Is there a motion to introduce?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Um is Mr. Brooks still? Uh maybe Chief, you can answer this. Have all of the affected residents been notified? Uh on the uh uh the changes on the parking, uh parking prohibited for street cleaning, maintenance. It's a, you know, a bunch of different streets, you know, Walker Road, um Undercliff Terrace.
Undercliff Terrace was prompted by a one resident in particular that um petitioned all our neighbors. They were completely unanimously in agreement for overnight parking. Uh Zia Beck, uh Pavatul from the Traffic Bureau. And Joe Pelosi from the DPW Street Cleaning and Snow Removal Issue got together and brainstormed what would be the best uh regulations to put in place there. And that's that's what they came up with. So um the ordinance hasn't taken effect yet, so they, I wouldn't say they were notified that it's. In place because obviously that's a your discretion, but if it passes and, you know.
It'll be notified before it actually takes effect.
Yeah, and it'll be posted and so on. But it'll it'll expand, I believe, in all those instances, it will expand their ability to park, not take it away, so. They'll be happy to.
Right.
To know that this passes if it does.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Pending matters, new matters, council discussion. So there is an inquiry about when we will have a budget hearing. So can we pull out our calendars and identify when we can have our budget hearing? However, before we have our budget hearing, I wanted to ask if there is a desire to have a cannabis special meeting um so that we can sift through.
Yeah, we could do an email, and I'd just like to see that if we put on the agenda.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. And um pending matters, new matters, council discussion, do we have some dates that we can have our next budget hearing? So our next council meeting is on May second. Um I would like for us to, if all at all possible, have the budget hearing before the next council meeting. Um is anyone available to have a? So if we're going to get the bu- well, if we're going to get the budget on the twenty-first, he said before Friday. Then maybe we should probably focus on. Now, um I was going to ask for two meetings in May. Is anyone opposed on that first week of May? Is anyone opposed to having a budget hearing on May fourth? Thursday, May fourth?
Thank, yeah, I think it's. I would like two full weeks, so.
That's not, that's thirteen days as opposed to two full.
Do they have to meet citizens' budget meeting or are they meeting?
No, we meet first.
We meet first. Yes. Um. That that's thirteen days. Yeah, that's thirteen days, thirteen days, fourteen days. May fourth.
I mean, that week, we also have a council meeting.
Right, on May second.
I would prefer that we would do it on that Monday, the eighth. Um. The fourth and the eighth. I'd like to have a two full week period as well.
That's.
I know it's only one day, but it's a council meeting that week too, so they kind of.
Well, we other, we also have committee meetings, some of us on the other weeks. I mean, like, when you guys have your other meetings, like, I know the bomb without PRC.
Today is, I know that Thursday I don't.
I can't do the week of the fifteenth. I got sixteen, seventeenth council and and uh well, this this side's over.
So May fourth, back to May fourth. Can we do it on May fourth?
I'm free on the eighth, but you're not free on the eighth.
He's not.
Not. We can do the fourth or the twelfth.
What time?
I don't want to do a Friday night.
I'm not doing.
I'm not doing a Friday night.
What time we talk?
Oh, well, that's up to us. I mean, what time is available for you if we do it on the fourth?
It's not fair to stay after either.
Yeah, uh so, I mean, I can.
Can we meet at six o'clock on the fourth?
Actually, if we, if it's possible, I'd rather be around.
Okay, five thirty. Six o'clock. Yeah, she has six o'clock. Okay, so we're going to schedule our budget hearing, Madam Clerk, for six P M on May fourth.
May the fourth be with you.
May the fourth be with us. Absolutely. Um as far as any additional pending matters, new matters, council discussion, does anyone have anything? I'd like to call for an adjournment and I'm sorry.
You uh you wanted to bring up that you want the resolution. Well, you guys already said you're going to cut it on the next meeting.
And I want to. I'm sorry, we don't have public comment at this time? I understand, but we don't have public comment at this time. Public comment is usually at seven o'clock when we start the meeting. So if you'd like to do public comment, come in at seven o'clock.
It's on second reading, so it's it's on first reading, so yes.
Okay, so we don't do public comment on the first reading. I'm sorry, I apologize. No, 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 I I thought you meant public comment in general. Okay, no problem. So we'll have public comment at the next meeting when it's on second. No, 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 when it's on second reading. So because it's actually a ordinance that will be on second reading. Public comment will be when we get to that part of the agenda. Okay. Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. All right, so I'd like to call um for a motion to.
I just wanted um to ask about the cannabis ordinance. Everybody's in agreement that it's going on the next agenda.
Yes.
Sent.
Yeah.
We'll have revisions in in plenty of time.
Okay. They were sent last Tuesday.
Yes.
Well, there's one more.
Okay, and I just wanted to put this on the record because there was some confusion about getting the cannabis ordinance on the agenda this evening. So in our code, it states ordinances and resolution shall be uh prepared for the consideration of township council. By the township attorney or the legal assistant upon motion of the council or request of the mayor. Prior to inter- introduction, each proposed ordinance requiring or permitting administrative action shall be submitted to the business administrator. And the department head concerned. So. It that wasn't done, and that's why it wasn't put on. So it was, you know, there were, there was conversations.
I'm not mad at you.
No, I I'm glad that you're not mad, me and I.
Well, you don't have to be mad, but I I want to appreciate my council colleagues disparaging my decisions and accusing me of stalling. And so that was the comment that was made to the clerk of court, and I don't appreciate that because that wasn't the case.
Well, would, so I've not.
And that wasn't you who said that, so you don't even have to respond to it.
I don't, but I heard the same comment.
Okay.
And I I think it was because there was some comment around.
Well, let's just be clear on how we need to function and what our role and responsibilities are. And the clerk of court just indicated that it wasn't done properly. So I don't expect. But I'm just letting you know, I wasn't stonewalling, and it wasn't put on because it wasn't done properly.
I didn't apologize.
I didn't expect for anyone to.
Okay.
I said, I don't expect an apology, so we're very clear. Now, if we just go into executive session, that would be appreciated.
Offer that motion.
Yeah, you're not coming back.
Okay, so we will go into executive session, and then we will adjourn the meeting immediately following the close of executive session.
Is there most going to executive session?
I just made you.
You did. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Okay. All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed?
Okay.
The motion is carried. You're going to sign off?
No, we'll get signed off.
Bye, West Orange.
Bye, West Orange.
Good night, West Orange. Our next meeting is on May second. I look forward to seeing you then.
Good night, West Orange. Just to be clear, the council meeting is going, the council is going to executive session. The meeting is going to be adjourned. They will not be returning to council chambers. Thank you.